Been active, up and doing. Is the chat open? Oh, it is. Okay. Okay. Then we can see none. We will close the chat and turn to in person. Would anyone like to make public comment? Please.
Hi, my name is Antonella Muna. I live at Twenty Hall Street in Essex. Since we have two elementary schools that then combine at the middle school level, it makes the most sense to focus on closing the achievement gap here to improve the district as a whole. We can already see through multiple measures that one elementary school is doing quite well, while the other could use more attention and support. It's true, Essex Elementary is a Title I school in a community with a higher percentage of low-income families. While socioeconomic status is not always a predictor of student achievement, in our case, the correlation holds true. Rather than focusing on the elementary schools together and treating them the same, I would like to see a focus on each individual school so their specific populations may be highlighted and supported appropriately. One fiscal measure to consider is the per pupil expenditure at the classroom level, where you take teacher plus teacher aid salaries and calculate the cost per pupil in each classroom, remove all external factors that do not directly impact students, and compare. In the high school, this measure will allow us to look at the actual cost of each course offering within the same subject, but comparisons can also be made with AP versus college prep classes, subject to subject, and even grade to grade. The per pupil expenditure at the classroom level clearly identifies where our priorities lie and establishes the current cost of providing certain options. I recognize that you are being asked to do more with less. As Pam has stated multiple times, this is an issue across the state. We have seen our budget issues persist year over year, but what is keeping us from moving forward? With Manchester enrollment declining three percent in the past few years, we must consider if we want to continue in the same way we have for the past 10 years, or if we need to transition to a different model that continues to support our students in the best way possible. Enrollment in public schools is declining across the state. While there are multiple factors that contribute to that decline, I believe that for the most part, those factors are beyond our control. We need to prepare for this new normal, and we cannot continue operating the district as if this isn't happening. We need to decide what is vital and what isn't. And while opinions matter, we are at a point where we need to seek objective measures to make informed decisions. Show me evidence where all these factors have been considered and that what we are currently doing cannot be done in a better way. Our budget should reflect working towards closing the achievement gap between elementary schools. Our budget should reflect that it is built on strategy and student achievement rather than last year's budget, and our budget should reflect strategic high school schedule offerings. Do not rush this process while an override may get you to a particular point. It is only a short-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Antonella. Can I ask one very quick follow-up? Could you just repeat when you were talking about calculating the cost per student, what your?
So teacher plus teacher assistance, so in the classroom.
Like teacher salary plus?
And just the salaries and then dividing it by the number of students, and you could compare grade to grade, class to class.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I had that.
I did research. I could show you the article. Okay, that was not my idea. Let's stick with public.
I know. I just wanted to make sure that I had it in my notes.
Understood. Understood. Any other public comment? Thank you, Antonella. Any other public comment?
Hi, Lindsay Banks, Forty Fourth Street. Definitely concerned about the lower scores relative to Manchester and Essex, and very much want to see that addressed. And the way to do that is put a more robust budget and more instructional coaches, which is what the principals are asking for to address the issue, not less. Thank you.
If anyone else would like to make public comment. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment and move forward. Thank you for participating. Chairperson's report. So I would like to begin where I should have started originally by welcoming you all here. I know we have members of the student body. We have a special new guest who will be introduced later, but thank you. Welcome for, thank you for being here and welcome to you all. Couple quick things that I have for you tonight. The things that I've been working on, you're going to hear throughout the meeting, so I don't need to give it to you all right now. But one thing that I do want to report back on, following up from our community engagement update conversation on December nineteenth, I did reach out to Erica Brown of the Cricket, and I wanted to report back to you guys in my chairperson's report because we're not going to be discussing community engagement as an agenda item tonight, but I want to give you an update on the conversation I had with her because I think it's really important. It was eye-opening for me, so. If you're online, could you please mute yourself or on the phone? Thank you. So I reached out with the ask as we had discussed it and explained the basis for it, and in conversation with her, I learned that we are not the only ones with such an idea, and that recently she has had a number of requests from different groups. Some of them are town, because I won't single any of them out, but a number of different requests from groups to have dedicated time and space in the Cricket. And this is of concern because there is a finite amount of time and space, but also, and I thought this was really important, she wants to make sure that this doesn't become a newsletter format. This is not, this is, you know, it's a business. It is not everybody submit your information and we disseminate it for you. And, you know, I think that sometimes when we have such a great community resource like this, we all feel a bit entitled to utilize it in different ways. That may be why letter to the editor was suggested in that initial presentation because it is not an ask of that. But we talked a little further about it, and she contemplated on this because the school issues that we're facing are unique. And she came up with the, not equivalent, but how it's comparable with things that the planning board deals with, that the planning boards for each town, you're frequently dealing with things that elicit strong reaction and are of great public interest, and that we are in a similar category to that. And what she has done with the planning board in the past is when there is something coming up, rather than having a regularly scheduled segment, but when there is something coming up, allowing them to submit something and it is, you know, poster printed under the heading of submitted by the planning board or whatnot. And so as we talked about that, she said that that is something she would be willing to do for us, that she thought it might be appropriate to do maybe three between now and town meeting. And her suggestion was that we maybe consider, we're not limited to this, but a suggestion was that we consider that she's seen great success with process pieces. So here's what we're doing and here's how it works. Here is what the budget process is and what you can expect. Or here is what the MSBA process is and what you can expect. So general understanding kind of points. Beyond that, she did say that yes, we can, especially for more timely things, use the letter to the editor piece to address things in short term, which was the counsel we had received in the first place as well. So I just wanted to let you know that I did follow up on that. What we had been thinking is not going to work out in the exact way we hoped, but I think we still have opportunity for it. And I think that as we go forward, if we want to put a little more time to discussing how this works moving forward, we can. Tonight's not the night for it, but that follow-up did take place. We did not move forward within office hours before this meeting because we decided to hold a finance subcommittee meeting. I'm certain that some of us did do personal outreach on that because there were people here. So we are moving forward to some of those community engagement goals, but I didn't say I would update within this. So that's the brief update that I want to give for that today. Like I said, you'll hear more throughout the meeting on things that I've been working on in the in-between here. And so with that, I will just turn to protocols. I know Erica and Anna have both recently done these. Diego, would you be willing to read our protocols? I will give you the next two, please. This one and the one on the back. Thank you.
Honor our agreed upon operating protocols and norms and agree to take responsibility for reminding one another through the chair when discussions get off track, personal or redundant. Second one is channel requests for information, reports, and data through the superintendent and the chair rather than directly to staff. The chair and the superintendent will ensure that each member has equal access to this information in a timely manner.
Thank you very much. All right, and we've got to close my chairperson's report and turn to Diego for student report. I understand you have assistants?
Yes, Stella, if you want to come up.
Join us. No, she can join us. I don't go get in a hard chair for many people.
Um, so for those of you who don't know Stella, Stella works on the student advisory board at school with me. It's kind of the group of students I always refer to when I talk about our meetings and stuff. It's two kids from each grade in the high school and meet with Spoden, Splitman, and Scroyd, and we talk about various like kind of issues we're seeing in the school and things that are, you know, relevant to the school committee. And then obviously I come here and kind of report them out. And kind of, I guess, as we keep going through this year, Stella is going to be here with me more and more, kind of helping me do the report. And I guess the goal is that eventually, at least at the end of this year, Stella will take my place here and continue to do the work that I've been doing over the past few years.
A succession plan. Look at this.
Yes, I'm pretty excited about it. So I guess I'll, I can start off my report by kind of, I took a look over the agenda today and I kind of, I saw that we're talking about the program studies. I know I've talked about it a lot, but I kind of wanted to reiterate the student point of view on this and go over my thoughts and kind of what other people have been saying as well. So I guess number one would be class sizes, and that's always something we're talking about here, and it seems like it's probably one of those relevant things to the conversation. And I guess, kind of, maybe kind of like, I guess the students' take on class sizes is that, number one, I think everyone I've talked to that's like been in a small class obviously says that like the small class environment is really beneficial. And at least from the people that I've talked to that have been in small classes, it is either in some of the highest level classes, so just AP courses, or some of the lowest level classes for students that might need a little bit extra help. And I feel like for both different environments, for students that are taking the highest level of courses, the more individual attention's been really helpful. Then also for students that need extra help, like at a lower level, that's also been, you know, the smaller environments have been really helpful for them. Another kind of thing to maybe keep in mind as well is when you're looking at the different sections in the course of studies and you're looking at, okay, what's the average class size? And you look at these certain courses this year that maybe have lower enrollment. I think something to keep in mind is that a lot of these are courses that have been around for years and years that the school has been able to sustain up to now. And I would say enrollment in certain classes just shifts generally. Like a perfect example would be AP US history, where last year I think there was a class of five students, and then the other class was like around 10 in AP US history. And this year, the APUSH classes, are you in an APUSH class?
I am in APUSH.
How many kids are in your APUSH class?
Four classes, like 25 or 26. And there's two sections.
Yeah, so like, that's a perfect example right there of how, okay, you look at APUSH last year, and it's like, oh, this might be an efficiency or a waste of money. Like, no one takes this class. Like, let's get rid of it. And this year, 50 kids are taking it. So it's like, you know, you gotta think like, it's, you're only looking at a snapshot of what the real situation is. Like, it's just this year, there are trends. I mean, like, students are extremely gossipy, so they might say, oh, this class was super hard, so then no one takes it the next year. And then, you know, another group of students come in like, oh, this was easy. And then the enrollment goes back up. So I feel like, you know, it's kind of like a balancing act. So obviously, I'm sure there are places where you can, you know, tighten things up and make it a little better, but I think it's also important to remember that this stuff does change. And then kind of like a final point as well, this is more of a personal thing just for me, but at least some of the courses that I've taken that have been like really small sections, like, I always talk about it, but AP Chem is a very good example. Like, usually the classes are a little bit smaller, and there's only one section of it. But like, the people that take that class really like that class. And it has a really, I would say generally, all the kids that take the class pass the test that end up being really successful. And I know that it's like, kind of, to have kids here come and say like, oh, well, I love this class and I don't think it should be cut. But like, I feel like if it's something like that where it kind of has like a following of people and the kids that take it, they talk to the lower grades and you should take this class next year, like, stuff like that, I think is really, really important to keep if it's been kind of like, maybe tradition's not the right word, but like, been a practice for a very long time. Like, it's important to realize, like, there are underclassmen that are maybe planning to take these single sections later on, so getting rid of them or bringing them back, you know, like, it affects people. Anyone have any questions about that? Yeah?
Yeah, so you've been here long enough to appreciate the reason why we're looking at this. And I'm curious, from the student perspective, if you think there's a different way for us to look at it. Like, I think we're all cognizant, or I'll speak for myself, I'm cognizant, that there are some small classes which are absolutely valuable and we wouldn't want to change. But do you guys have any input on whether there are, are there some places, as you say, maybe there's some places that could tighten it up? Like, what would we look at if we wanted to look at a metric to see if there's certainly smaller classes that maybe aren't being appreciated as much as they should?
I mean, I would honestly say, like, the best way to look at this would really, and I don't know how this could be done, but like, go to some of the really smaller sections and like, almost like go in the classroom and kind of see the, like, how, like how it's going, like the students that are taking the class. And I really also think it would be very valuable, and I'm not going to speak for everyone that's in a really small class, and I've talked to everyone that's in a really small class, but I would also ask people why they're taking the classes that they're taking and with what intention. You know what I mean? So there might be a really small class where it's like, okay, I didn't have anything in my schedule, and all these kids had kind of a strange schedule, so they all just got lumped into this class to fill a spot. Like, is that really the best use of that section? Maybe not. Or if it's a class where it's like kids are just taking a small class to like check a box, like, maybe that box shouldn't be there anymore if it's like, you know, causing, if it's like, okay, the section of five people, but they're all taking it just to fill a spot in the schedule. You know what I mean? I would actually say, yeah, that would probably be the way I would look at it and say, okay, maybe there's just one really small section of this class because of the way that our, kind of, I would say a little bit like weird schedule kind of works, you know? Maybe it's that all these people have a similar pattern of classes, so there's going to be these five people that are getting lumped into a section, you know? I think that would actually, I'd actually be curious to look at that and see.
Thanks. That's great. Great feedback. Thanks.
Anything else? So if not Stella, do you kind of want to, Stella had some stuff to share, something to work on?
Yeah, sure. So I just had a little bit of an update for the student advisory board and the school committee. So as you said, on the advisory board, there's representatives from each of the grades, and we all make an effort to talk to people in our grade, but it's really difficult to get around to everybody and really, maybe to kind of increase accessibility of student input to the board. There are now QR codes around the school in hallways, classrooms, and other public areas that students can use to submit an anonymous like question or concern to the student advisory board that will look at it, make sure it's heard, and if it's productive and relevant, voice to the school committee. So that could be about, you know, like course issues, course changes, extracurriculars in the sports, or kind of any range of school-related issues that students would want to give their input on. The idea is really just to give students a channel for their voices. And kind of the reasoning behind that was, as the school committee moves deeper into budget season, we think it's really helpful for students to be able to ask questions about what's going on and figure out where the school committee is in that process, which will hopefully like allow students to kind of remain more informed about what's going on and kind of like where you guys are at, which we saw a need for last year. So that's kind of to help fill that need a little bit moving forward this year.
Wonderful.
Most suggestions go straight to the advisory board, or does that include like the principal and administrators?
Well, so right now, they actually just go straight to like a folder in my email. But then basically, basically, once we meet one rather advisory board, we'll go through them and say, oh, this is, you know, maybe something that we should talk about. This is a really good suggestion, or have we thought about this question? So kind of just generally like that. We're kind of expecting that to be more used once we move into like budget season and stuff like that, because that's definitely a need I saw with the student body last year. People have a lot to say, but not really like a direct channel or procedure with which to follow to say it.
And sometimes kids feel more comfortable raising these things with their peers versus the adults.
Yeah, like in the fact that it's anonymous, I think really helps too. And also like the fact that someone's looking at them before they get like sent on, because kind of the whole idea of IDA, and this is still in the works. But I think the idea is that we can look at it and say, okay, what's the best channel for this to go through and say, okay, is this a Scroy question, or is it a school committee question? Maybe it's neither, and it's actually a question with the teacher. They're kind of just sharing their grievances and QR code, which makes sense too, you know, so.
Yeah, or or even if it's just, you know, a question and we say, okay, like, there's nothing that really can be done about this, but we need to make people aware that there's nothing that can be done about this. So they're not just, you know, that they can resolve those things instead of just like toiling over that issue.
Make them feel heard. Make them be heard. Yeah, excellent. That's fantastic.
It's a good idea.
That's the initiative. That's nicely done. That's been in the works since last spring.
Yeah.
When it kind of came up, but then we were, yeah, it kind of took until this fall. But yeah. And that's a reminder for all of us as well to keep in mind. We did have a meeting last year where we just had students come and ask their questions.
And that's even good too.
That's right. There were good questions. And that's right. Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Stella on this? Any questions? All right. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I will take my chair back, but you will come sit at the table. Products of our school system box. Right here. Excellent. All right, we are currently right on schedule. So this is excellent. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. First of all, thank you, Pam, for doing a voucher summary. You did a good job, and I thank you for your work. That was, the office team helped me out a lot. Excellent. Did a nice job. Well, we appreciated receiving it. So I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, which would include, the warrant includes vouchers 1034 through 1037 and minutes from December 19th, 2024. Would someone like to make that motion?
Teresa, could we actually split them because I have to abstain on the minutes?
Sure. Yep, absolutely. Okay. So how about we start with an acceptance of the warrant that I'll, in motion to accept the warrant, which includes vouchers 1034 through 1037. On those. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from 121924 as presented. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second by Erica. Any discussion? All in favor? And want to stay? Thank you very much. All set. So we are on schedule, which is great. To begin our subcommittee reports. Facilities, subcommittee has not met, but we will be meeting starting soon, so get ready. Rest up. Finance Subcommittee, we just met before this meeting, actually, and we have three things to report out. The first is that we discussed the budget timeline upcoming. So the next step will be, Anna, correct me if I miss anything here. The next step will be the upcoming budget workshop. If you haven't, has everybody put in their availability at this point?
116 is the winner.
116 is the winner. Okay.
I knew that six of us are available for that one.
Okay, 116 at 12 o'clock will be our budget workshop. Excellent. And then after that, we will have the public hearing on 23rd. Have budget adoption at our February 7th meeting, and we will get to that point. We have, just a year 25 budget update later in the agendas. We don't need to go too much into that. We also talked about, given that there are some financial, there's a considerable financial component to the MSBA process as we start to as we, as we begin toward the eligibility period. I'm trying to be careful with my language here.
I can tell it was stressing me out.
Yes, yes, I'm trying to be careful with my language. But the point is that one of the things we will need to do throughout this very prescribed process, which is very helpful, is finance a feasibility, determine a way to finance a feasibility study. We don't need to get into all the details of that right now. But what we discussed in the finance subcommittee is that even though collaboration group is not currently meeting, we do want to set a meeting to which we will invite the chairpeople of those pertinent boards, so that each town's select board and finance committees, and also the town administrators meet with us to discuss this because it was recommended by MSBA that we, that towns do these things early, trying to improve early rather than waiting. And so we do need to have that conversation. So we are in agreement that we should move forward with an invitation, and whoever chooses to come participate comes and participates.
I'm just adding to it, but it was helpful for me to understand. It's the reason of to start this process now is to have the town to vote in April to see where all this is coming from their budget or incorporate into the 2025 budget.
Yeah, there, yeah, there's some timeliness to this that we need to move forward with this now.
Can I ask a clarifying question? You said that the collaboration group is not meeting, is no longer meeting.
Collaboration group is not currently meeting, and actually, this is the time to discuss that. So yeah, can we come back to that momentarily? So that was the second piece there. The third piece is that another, and I received an email and it brought to mind again the conversation from the public hearing about discussing the enforcement. And it was on the list of suggestions that we received at the all-boards meeting. I want to be very clear, we were all real clear about this in our subcommittee meetings, that we are not suggesting that this be something that we undertake to change. But at the moment, this keeps coming up, and we think it would be wise to, as finance subcommittee, undertake a process of learning to look at what other districts have in place and how, and learn how ours is different from that or the same, and just see what's out there. Again, for the process of, just for the sake of learning at this point, Pam noted that, that there is support, that it is strongly recommended that we have support doing this, and there is support potentially available through Mars and is planning to reach out for that. So at the moment.
Through Mars.
Yes, to actually help us do this. Do you want to speak to that a moment?
Sure, I'll just share that Mars is the Mass Association of Regional Schools, who are members of that.
Thank you.
They do offer consultant services. They they have been part of the regional development of regional districts in the state for a very, very long time. They work in partnership with representatives from Desing. And I did, I was able to participate in the webinar today, and I think I would, I shared earlier with Teresa and Anna, one major takeaway was they strongly suggest enlisting outside support when you're going to take on a review or an assessment as to whether or not you conduct a review. And then, just in talking about looking at other formulas, don't cut haste. Like, everything is very unique to situations, two-town districts versus three, eight-town districts. So just reach out to them, and they will do an initial rediscussion with us, and then they offer paid consultant services if we want more depth. More in-depth support. More in-depth support.
Happy to reach out to get that ball rolling. Thank you. So that is, that is the report out from what we discussed in meeting today, right? We've covered that. Um, and then the second part of that is the finance subcommittee um is who has been working as the collaboration group. At one point, I think we changed the name on our actual reports here, but we're back to finance subcommittee. But just to give everyone an update of where we are, um, Pam did send out an invitation on December twenty-first after our last meeting to the collaboration group um to see if there was interest in uh meeting uh in the new year um, with the understanding that our committee uh needs it to be a public meeting. We did get some responses, um, summarizing them. Um, we had um we had the town administrator from Essex speaking on behalf of the Board of Selectmen that um they they do not have interest in engaging in a collaboration group uh meeting if it is a public meeting. Um, we did not hear anything separately from uh the Town of Essex Finance Committee. We did hear from a um Manchester Select Board Representative who prefers informal um, non-public collaboration a- as it was structured previously, but um but is open to other formats if necessary. Um, had two Manchester FinCom reps respond. One um recommends the old format, old format. Um, but it wasn't really a hard line. It was just the recommendation, my recommendation would be to go back to the old format. And another who didn't state whether um willing or unwilling to meet publicly, but in the state of where we are with this, which is understandable, of course.
Could you clarify when people say um use terms like go back to the way it used to be?
Mm-hmm.
Could you provide a little bit of history about what the collaboration group used to be and why?
Yeah, actually, one of one of the people did a nice job doing that. I could use their words.
Yeah, if you could start with that.
Yep, that would be great. Um, so I won't, I won't state whose email this was just because I did not hear this in advance, but it says, a bit of history. When we first started the collaboration meetings years ago, the purpose was to bring to bring a few people together from the two towns and the school committee for informal discussions about budgets and directions. By way of history, the collaboration meetings were formed at a time when the budget process was very divisive, with the district proposing large budget increases in excess of seven percent. Manchester facing significant annual increases and too much political animosity. The collaboration meetings were in addition to school committee meetings and the individual FinCom and select board meetings. This person's observation is that these collaboration meetings have been valuable in exploring ideas, pulling in new thoughts and information that everyone benefits from. At times, the discussion does move into confidential areas and uncomfortable discussion topics. However, the ideas and information have been extremely useful for the district and the two towns. And so I would say that my, that's my understanding and really well put for the past history. The most recent history I can speak to, because I've been on it for my entire term or two terms, um, has been primarily discussing um the constraints and how they will be met um for the past few years. We haven't done a lot of problem solving together, um, but the most recent iteration, as we all know, um, of collaboration group included a um a unified report out, uh, summary of the meeting. And um, that was the most recent iteration. But again, those were private meetings. Did any of the people that responded to say that they would wouldn't participate in an open meeting, but they would be willing to go back to the way it was or words without that? Have an understanding of whether we could actually do so without violating open meeting law?
Wait, did anyone actually respond? But that wasn't what I took away from what Teresa said.
I thought, I thought the, well, I wasn't there a response that said that they were, I guess what I'm trying to understand is if we can't do this, if if our understanding is we can't do it without violating open meeting law? Is is there a town board suggesting otherwise that that either has sought counsel or is saying that we could go back to the process? So I will say, I I have not received, and Pam, you can check me if you have. I have not received any communication from any of these boards saying, I have looked into this. Here's a, here's why we are not violating open meeting law. Everyone sort of has individual opinions on it. Um, I did receive um input from one person informally for and verbally saying that there may be a way to structure it such that it could be considered a group that wouldn't violate open meeting law, that there is a way. But but that was in, I don't know, early November, earlier mid-November. Um, and so, no, there's not been movement on this per se to to find out whether it should or shouldn't be the case for open meeting in particular.
So should we or request a legal input? Are legal input on this question?
I think it's up to
I did speak with Colby. Uh, not, I didn't ask her for a legal opinion, but I did have a discussion with her. And I think what is bringing us to the to a violation is how the group has evolved. So what was described historically, it's no longer an informal meeting of heads of boards getting together to provide each other updates and inform individual group decision-making. It's moved into people with a formal agenda, um, decisions, report outs and essentially summary, which could be considered minutes. So it's taking taking on characteristics of a public meeting. Um, if we went back to an informal session and we felt everyone would live by those rules, I think we could resume informal meetings.
So what defines informal? These report outs are are based on what I've read, isn't the report out a problem?
It's a big piece of it. I think there's also been in, there's been non-written report outs about decisions made. And as soon as we start to become a decision-making body or body making rec- formal recommendations, it becomes a public body.
The summaries came because we had different report outs happening to each of the different groups being represented. And and some of those things were were representing that decisions were made in these and it was problematic.
And, you know, things were, there was a lot going on last spring. My recommendation, and again, I I kick myself for using the the term mediation. I came to a recommendation of facilitation, which is the word I should have used because it's really not, it's not the what, but it's the how things are starting, started to be reported out, spun out, take out of context. We just need some help on building um safe communications between the groups to, I think, restore the informal uh work that was being done in the past. So I think it's just kind of taken on a length of its own.
So at this this point, there's not necessarily any action we need to take. Um, and we're really letting you know that there was an invitation, that a meeting did not take place. There are some people who would be willing to meet and even I, you know, entertain other ideas. Well, I wanted to say something.
There's also one person, and maybe you said that already, is to recommend to deeply the the size.
Yeah.
To make it even, I don't know if they'll help to make it more formal, but to make it small.
Yeah.
So how many hard no's we will not participate in an open collaboration group meeting, did you get that?
Board of Selectmen from Essex. And I I just don't know if that is meant to also represent the finance committee because we didn't hear back from them. So I don't know on that.
Um, that's surprising to me, given the focus on transparency and the amount that we've heard that word thrown around. Um, I wish that we could have these conversations available to all members of the public. Um, and I would hope that if Essex were going to come back and tell us they will absolutely not participate in these if they are open meetings, that they would have already sought legal advice regarding whether or not these qualify as open meetings.
Well, I I do want to be mindful also of what is, what is the problem we're trying to solve? Collaboration group was meeting in order to come up with ideas and work together on solutions for this budget situation. We're in it. We're in it now. We know what Essex's ask is. We know where Manchester is at this point right now. We have the information we need, and I think that moving forward, if if we're not able to come to some agreement on this to to resume in a in a private way or in a way that's not private and agreeable uh to people. We still need to get the work done. And so, for instance, like the MSBA thing, we need to have some conversation. Traditionally, it might have taken place in a collaboration group meeting. But right now, that's not the way we're doing this. And so we're going to invite this specific people who need to have that conversation, to have the conversation. And whoever chooses to participate, participates. I hope all will. But we've got to start somewhere.
So what do you mean by conversation?
Exactly what Pam was, oh, may, you got to remember what we said in this meeting and what we said in the last meeting.
Like when we say, oh, we're not having a meeting of this group of people, we're just having a conversation, is that?
Oh, no, I'm I'm suggesting that is a meeting.
Okay, that was my clarification.
Yes, was that to have a conversation within a public league of meetings. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I think the question for others is to ask um the the committee again, are we sure that we want to stay, I mean, stay on the hard one, that we don't want the collaboration moving? Or we don't want to participate in a collaboration meeting unless it's tough? What if it's informal or smaller or whatever that might be?
So I I don't want to engage in that. First of all, that is something we have recently voted on. So if in order to retake that up, I would need to take a motion on that.
I'm not offering a motion to be saying, given the comments that Pam made about her conversation with our legal counsel, let's say, and not vote.
So I don't hear a motion, so we're not going to entertain that discussion at this point. Okay, but we will move forward with the other invitation to have um
So to clarify, I'll reach out to town administrators and finance can uh Board of Selectmen chairs meeting to discuss MSBA in the timeline.
Yes, please. Thank you. That was a long subcommittee report. Did you got it?
I'm making another quick comment just on our very question.
Yep.
From this call. Uh, I do think it would be a very valuable use of our time to explore the report form. Um, I just want to make sure that that would not distract from our current business of finalizing a budget for this year because there's, you know, there would be no time to go through that process. But uh, starting it and lining things up so we can begin to have those conversations, you know, right after this budget season, I think it'd be a very valuable start.
We talked about that too, that that we don't need this to happen next week. We we have some things on our plate, just roll them up, but we we're with you on that.
Okay, one thing to add from the subcommittee is uh before, since now we have a date for the uh workshop, um, next um, is to maybe send Pam recommendations of the topic, if any, and then she will prioritize what we can discuss within the ninety minutes.
Mm-hmm.
I will do my best. That's Tuesday.
That's fast. Okay. All right, negotiations. Kate and Chris.
We have not met since our last school committee meeting that I forgot. Our next meeting is on January sixteen.
The negotiations are ongoing and we are getting to a point where we do need to come back with a plan.
Right, I'm trying to remember when our last school committee meeting was versus our executive. We did have an executive session to discuss.
We did.
And that was after our last, okay. So that is our report.
Yes. All right, thank you. Okay, policy and program. You still have, we have a bunch there. All right, so policy and program update. I understand we are going to um Pam sent out the information about the graduation requirements.
That was just to put it back on our radar screen that this is an an open-ended piece.
Yep.
I don't think it we didn't change it last year and went forward with our past practice of the program of studies defining
Yeah.
what the graduation requirements were. So I think we should try to close the loop before the end of the year. So it's just to put it back up to the top of the list. So do what you will with it tonight.
Well, you have, I mean, you have provided a potential uh piece as as information item distribution with agenda per the policy adoption section of our policy manual. Um, and it is now a discussion item. So uh, shall we move forward so with this so that we can actually move on this and discuss it?
So I'll I'll say from my perspective, our last discussion, and we have not met since, as a as a subcommittee since our last school committee meeting, um, our last discussion as a subcommittee about this was really centered around is there a way to indicate that the program of study is where the policy is housed?
Yep.
Not necessarily that that is the mechanism to adopt graduation expectation. Because fundamentally, graduation expectations is one of our core responsibilities.
Right.
And if we put it in the program of studies, that actually indicates that it's more on the administration's first uh ask and because the program studies is fundamentally a a high school administration document. And it also indicates that we would be adopting graduation requirements every year because we adopt the program of studies every year. And that's not the intent, I don't think. And not to say that Pam or the administration is going to treat it that way, but it could open it up to that interpretation. So personally, I would say, let's not act on this today. Send it back to the subcommittee meeting that personally, I think the best way to do it is just keep the graduation requirements in our policy manual and copy it into the into the program of studies, just like we do with every other policy and like student handbooks and whatnot. But that's, we haven't decided it. We haven't talked about that.
So it sounds like we are discussing the item currently, which we we may send back for revision. I I'm just following the policy about the policy here. I'm not sure if I entirely agree that that takes that out of of school committee purview, even even the appearance of it. Um, because it does still remain our graduate, we still have to approve it and we do have to approve the program of study. But I guess my question for the committee is, do we want to discuss this tonight or do we want to table it for now? I I'm in, I'm in favor.
I will make a motion to table it.
Is there a second? Discussion? I I personally was able to read this. I I don't think it's terribly controversial and would be happy to add, um, but I can be downvoted on that.
I I didn't, sorry, Jake, but I didn't totally follow. Is there something we could do now, just in the interest of actually completing something? Would it be possible for you to say what you would like this to say instead? Because I know this is something that you raised and it made sense to me. So I want to honor how you thought of it, but I, is there a way for us to do it right now? Just.
We could, we could take the line, our our actual graduation requirements, which are currently housed in the program of studies and make it our policy in our policy handbook.
So we would cut and paste from our program of studies into the policy? Well, so can we just make a motion that to amend?
Amend the graduation policy to reflect our actual graduation requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Question. What are some of the unanticipated consequences of such a move, Pam?
I don't have anything coming off the top of my head.
We just have to remember to update it every time.
Yeah, with, I think the, this is the Andover policy. That's where we
Yeah.
where that came from when we were searching through policies. What it does is it negates the need to update the policy every year because the reason we have an outdated policy is because we haven't been updating the policy every year. We come, we do the program of studies and we just, it's just forgotten about it. It's not a good excuse, but that's the reality. So it just it really for us doesn't make much of a difference. If there's a strong preference, we'll go with the committee will on this.
So I I have, I have a thought on this and I I wonder if if maybe there's a split the difference here that because I do like the opportunity to just keep it simple like this and it's in the program of studies. We already have to approve the program of studies. But maybe it means that we're much more aware and have a separate, when we take on the program of studies, we're making sure we have the conversation about the graduation requirement therein and the program of studies. Because we we are approving them together, but with recognition that the graduation requirements are housed there.
I'm wondering also if there is a way to add wording that I'm wondering also if there is a way to add wording that just refers back to the program of studies, which is approved, which is reviewed and approved annually by the school committee.
That's what was, that's what Pam proposed, isn't it? That's, that's the language that was proposed in our packet.
Nothing I claim no ownership by, claim a little bit of copying and pasting.
Yeah, so the draft here, because I would have to, I should read it.
But then, explain, then I guess the point that I am missing is why that wasn't adequate.
Because graduation requirements is a school committee policy, right? And it's not something that we should be changing every year, right? This is a pretty infrequent thing that we change, right? Because it's got huge impacts on students, families, program. And it is our responsibility, it's not a administration responsibility, which is, program of studies is an administration responsibility. We review that, but we do not set the program of studies. We do not do that. We do set graduation expectations. That is us.
But we do approve, we have to approve the program of study.
That's right, but we don't, we don't.
We don't create it, but neither, we don't create the graduation.
Create the graduate. That is our core responsibility. That's why we have local control school committees.
I know we have the authority to, but we do that just the way we do the program of study, which is on recommendation from the professionals that we hired to do so. Make sure that they're in alignment with our strategic vision and the laws.
What's wrong with Jake's suggestion though, since it does maybe more, it, it more properly captures the fact that that is actually our role? What, what's wrong with us just copying and pasting? You know, having thought about it, we agree that the administration has proposed a really sound set of graduation requirements. We're going to copy and paste it into our, our policy manual and we will then have to remember which Pam was trying to avoid having us have to do.
Right.
Yeah. I think that this is just a very circular conversation. We could close the door right now. We could, we could vote on this and we could, we could do it and we could just move on because the policy subcommittee is not making huge strides. I would like to do something, Kate.
That's fine with me. My question was, are there unanticipated consequences? The unanticipated consequence is that that need, we need to be sure that we are updating our.
Every year.
Because otherwise we're going to be back here.
May I, Julie is here. Can I just see if there's something that might come to her mind?
Yeah.
Julie, as you listen to the conversation, is there anything that comes to mind that makes a major difference from the work that you have to do? Whether or not we actually copy and paste and take the, the graduation requirements as presented and approved in the process of annually revising the program of studies and put them in the policy versus basically just saying whatever's in the program of studies. Like, I can't think of anything that's really going to make.
No, like you said, they're, they're set and anything that would be changed would be.
We can't just change. I'd like to add equestrian writing.
So I think all we need to do is make, as a team, we need to remember now, next year when we pull into January, that we want the policy document prepped to come with the program.
They promised us to remember that.
He promises to remember.
We do not actually need to approve the graduation requirements every year. We only approve it when we make a change. And the policy will be in the program, the, the graduation requirements will still be in the program of studies. And if we, if it prompts us to make a change, then we can make a change whenever we want, not necessarily just at the moment of program study approval.
That makes sense. Yeah, it's fine. Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the motion as amended? That's unanimous. Okay, thank you all. Lovely.
Check something off the policy subcommittee list.
We're not done. Mic drop on, done on that. Excellent. Okay.
And I think it was under a year because our meeting last year was on, just fair.
Okay, the other thing that we need to discuss briefly though, actually, there are two other things very briefly in this for policy and program. So since the public hearing, there's been continued conversation by email with various interested parties about the topic of ad revenue. We had a community member mention it and say, someone make a proposal and bring it up and, and that sort of thing. And so that conversation has been ongoing. And we're at a point where we have a community member, I think we've all seen the email, I don't want to, in the moment, but use names. But we have a community member who's willing to sort of take this on, but also with a specific trajectory for, for where the funds go and, but there's also this parallel path of the town. I don't want to get bogged down in the details right now, but the fact is that we do already have a policy about advertising on school grounds. And the policy currently reads, no advertising of commercial products or services will be permitted in school buildings or on school grounds or properties without permission of the school committee. Publications of the school system will not contain any advertising. However, this will not prevent advertising in student publications, et cetera, about publications, which is not what we're discussing in the moment. Because right now we're talking about ad revenue for the field situation. So my question that I really, we really do need to answer to this community member in particular is, do we wish to engage in reviewing and potentially altering this policy? Because the policy as it reads, without, without school committee approval, is as if it's a one-off. Like if there's a one-off situation that comes to school committee for approval, that's one thing that we consider. But if we're talking about a stream of revenue to, to be planning on and working through, that's a continual thing and we would, it, it seems as though we would want to deal with the policy itself, potentially set, set some standards, that, you know, that sort of thing. So my question to the committee is, is this something that we are able and willing to take on right now? Do we wish to engage in reviewing and potentially changing this policy? Or do we want to move forward with this on a case-by-case basis, knowing that this case-by-case may come to us? And if that's the case, I keep saying case, are we interested in expediting that current issue? Because there is, there is some timeliness to that specific situation.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
So the current policy is to say that we cannot have advertisement for existing school on school property. Can you clarify if, who owns the fields? Is it the town or the school?
The school district own, well, it's, it's, we, it's our school.
So then why does Manchester have the bylaws saying that we cannot have advertisement?
So no, we're not, that's, that's a separate town thing. Right now, we're just focusing, we have, we have to table that for the moment because there are parallel paths here with Manchester's town bylaws. We would have to look at this because we can't enact a policy that, that would be outside of the bylaw. Right now, I really just want us to keep to, is this something that we want to take on for the policy and program subcommittee to, to task you with this?
It's really hard to say yes since I'm on it, but I, I think that we have now had people that are willing to dig in and we're sitting here in a state of budget that where we're constantly saying, where do we find other sources of revenue? So to shut the door on one of those sources, I mean, I'm certainly willing to listen if people have real concerns. But I think this has to make sense. I mean, we have to be willing to make some changes in order to face the financial reality we're in.
So it sounds like you were saying that yes, we should reconsider our policy.
Yes.
Okay. Strong, Strappel, is there anyone who feels strongly that we should not reconsider our policy?
Can I, can I just ask clarification, this one person? Are they, are they proposing to help us think this through? Or are they proposing to find, to figure out the ad revenue part of this?
So I'm, I'm trying to knock with her, but I guess I think I'm going to have to a little bit. So the, the person who's willing to sort of take this on as a project is looking at this in terms of a specific avenue. Like this is on a sports field. So for instance, if, if sports inclined people took this on and then perhaps the money would go to sports. So this is a whole different conversation of what would happen to the money that I, I don't want to get too lost in. But, but that's why it's coming up this way.
I feel very strongly about both of those issues in disparate ways. So I, I appreciate you breaking it down this way because I, I don't want to get into the, the funds must be used for a specific purpose yet. But I do agree that we should be exploring all avenues of possible revenue.
Did I answer your question though?
I guess I'm trying to figure out, why can't we explore that parallel to thinking about policy implications? Because, because I think the policy implications have as much to do with, do we limit who can advertise? Because it's certain content or certain, do we allow beer ads, right? So I think that's, that's where the policy stuff comes in and that's separate from kind of the revenue question.
I'm not sure it is because if, if, if we're going to suggest, okay, yes, we have a person who's willing to take this on and it is being looked at as a revenue stream for ongoing money coming into wherever, but coming in. Then we actually do need to be adjusting our policy to match that, I think. And, but regarding the, can we do it in a parallel way? I think that timing wise, it might have to be, like it may be that if we say, yes, we're willing to reconsider our policy, then a person who's willing to run with this might move forward and maybe come to us with a presentation about this specific thing. Because we could still act under that while considering the policy. We could still choose to approve something as a one-off, knowing that we are choosing to reconsider this policy. But I'm not sure it would be wise of us, and it's up for debate, to approve this as a one-off thing if we're not willing to reconsider this as a policy, because you're talking about a, a repeated generating screen.
So in that, in that case, I'm with Erica. Let's, let's have the conversation and play it out.
Okay.
And many other schools have ads.
Yes, and I'm sure that that would be something that the policy and program subcommittee would take on and you would have certainly assistance from anyone who needed it. Okay. So Strappel, then are we in agreement that we're going to ask the policy and program subcommittee to reconsider or to take a look again at our policy? This is policy KHB advertising in the schools.
Intention that we set up a standing meeting for the policy committee, because otherwise we end up having months between.
Will you bring me to my third point of your subcommittee report out? We're going to get scolded. You know, no, you're not at all. You're not getting scolded at all. You've had a lot on your plates. Yeah, no, it is recognized that there has been a lot on the plates, but we are half, almost halfway through the year. And, you know, we talk, time is short. And so I guess what I'm asking, what I would ask and what I've sort of led up to in the previous meetings is, at our January 23rd meeting, we have a business meeting before the, the public hearing. It would be really nice to have the policy and program subcommittee come prepared with a prioritized list of deliverables. Take a look at the calendar. Take a look at what you have on your plates, which right now, I mean, we're talking about, and again, this doesn't have to be overnight. But just give us an understanding of what we can expect. And I want to give a little bit of clarification here. So we've got reserves, we've got the sports request that came in that we discussed on the 19th. We've got the class size conversation, we have the MASC items, graduation policy check.
There's also the, the non-public school attendant, the.
Right, that was the sports thing that I was referring to. Yep. Then the advertising revenue. So what I, all, all I would like to hear as a report out is you don't have to know what all the things are, but just a schedule of what you can expect for deliverables. And one thing, based on a conversation I had actually with Erica the other day, I just want to be clear too. You don't need to come back to us with drafts of things. What, when it comes to any particular thing that the subcommittee is asked to take on, it is expected that you'll come back to the group with a question. So for instance, if, you know, the reserve policy, you guys have been tasked with, with discussing a reserve policy. It is expected that you'll come back to the group and say, we've looked at this, here's what we found. Here's what we, you know, have consensus on and what we don't have consensus on. Do we want to establish, you know, do you want us to draft a policy for XYZ? You don't have to solve the whole thing because it's for the whole group. So just to come back to us with the question so that the whole group is directing before anyone starts spending hours drafting policies. So that's, that's my ask for the 123 meeting and we'll set that, there's not going to be much else on the actual agenda for that preview. Fair? Yes. That's all I have for your subcommittee. But thank you. It's important, it's important work. All right, super intended. We are behind schedule, but that'll be okay.
This could move fairly quickly, I think.
The next one is super exciting.
It's very exciting.
To all of these lists of, my list is getting longer and longer. I've got the Avi side of the page.
Yeah, I've got the Pam side of the page.
But now we have Michelle.
We do have Michelle. Michelle, would you like to join us?
Please. What would you like? Right here in the center with your back directly to Anne. Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you. So the first item in my report tonight is to welcome Michelle, who has accepted our offer to join our district and is actually going to work very quickly to get here. We're planning to have her arrive by late March. We're thrilled. I know many of you have met her already. Her credentials have been posted online, so I know you're familiar with the breadth of experience that she has. We are so lucky in this market to have been able to partner with Michelle. So she is here tonight to be formally introduced and I need to make a formal recommendation that you appoint her to the role of Director of Finance and Operations. So I offer that recommendation, ask you to make a motion and then you can have a discussion with her about whatever you like. But we're thrilled. I'm absolutely thrilled.
Excellent. Well, just for the point of, for, for the record and our understanding and anyone listening, the reason we need to do this is because it's part of Mass General law.
Yep.
I, I even pulled it up today to make sure, Part One, Title 12, Chapter 71, Section 41, that a school committee may appoint this, this position here. And so this is our job to do based on the recommendation. So with that, I move to appoint Michelle Cresta as the Director of Finance and Operations for the Manchester Essex Regional School District, effective late March. Can I say if that?
You don't need to say effective, just a point and then we'll work out the rest of the details.
Perfect. Is there a second? This is second. Any discussion?
This is great news.
Thank you.
Could have been a much longer, less fruitful process, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, does anyone have questions for Michelle, please?
Well, we all read your resume, so.
Are you, are you?
I am ready.
Now that you've seen us for an hour.
Just super excited to be here. It's super exciting to start the transition and once I'm able to be here full time.
She's been very generous with her time and I think we'll, we'll start to see her toward the end of the month. So we can start to build her knowledge base of all the quirky way we do things here and benefit from her expertise. So we're thrilled, the team in the office is thrilled. Going to take an opportunity to actually commend the work that they're doing. They're doing an excellent job keeping things moving very smoothly. Trying to think of it like, someone's just taken a very long leave and we'll have somebody come in and our job is to keep it in manageable shape for the takeover. So just super excited.
Yes, we have a question. So would, since your study is the end of March and I think Pam, you mentioned that in between, that you will be joining us here and there. So I think my question is, will you be able to help Pam to kind of shape our budget before it goes to the company?
Think you're stuck with me, Anna?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think on that, and we can talk a little bit about it after, is I wouldn't expect anything too novel and new this year. What I'm working on is simplifying it to the best of my ability. And then that's probably going to be one of our big projects over the summer to think about how we can take some of the inputs and make some more lasting change and create some higher levels of transparency. There were a few things Avi and I were investigating prior to his departure that we just had to, part of my job is to say, we cannot take this on and do it well right now. So some things just had to, to come to a halt and we'll pick them up in March. But I think we'll be in, in decent shape. I will certainly lean into her expertise and I, and you should know that Avi has continued to make himself available for clarifying questions when I can't quite figure out his train of thought on something. He's been right there on the phone and in email. So we're not going full so well.
Excellent. We're very excited to have you and not only because it's someone, but because it's you. And I was at your interview and I remember it very well and we were all very impressed and, and we're just. And and I was at your interview and I remember it very well and we were all very impressed and and we just heard nothing but good, so thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? That is unanimous. You're welcome to stay, stay at the table. You're welcome to do as you please.
We're also welcome to be back.
We're thorough. So we've successfully brought this search to a close, just to open up the next one. We are getting ready to open up the Essex Elementary Principal Search. Sheila, I asked her again today, can I get another five years out of you? And she did say no. She is doing a great job and we will be sorry to see her go, but I know she she did retire a couple of years ago and probably would like to get on with that.
Lame.
Uh, we'll be posting. We're gonna post the end of this week. Parent focus groups and teacher focus groups will be the week of January second, twenty second, rather. The first round of interviews is scheduled to be somewhere between the fifth and the twelfth. With finalist site visits the week before February with appointments in March. So from beginning to end, we're trying to get this up and running this weekend, close it out and have someone appointed by the beginning of March. If this blueprint looks familiar, it's basically our same the same process we've used for the Curriculum Director Search. And the principal and dean searches last year, so far they've served us well, so.
Indeed.
There will also be a small survey that goes out. We did that at the high school. To kind of capture people if they can't come to this group, whether they. See in the next principal, what some of the challenges they think that person will be facing. So excited for that. We seem to have a question.
Um, I just wanted, just so I'm understanding, is parent focus groups, our parents. Not just from Essex Elementary, but from.
Oh, no, Essex Elementary parents.
So only Essex Elementary parents.
That's how we've done them in the past. It will be, right now it's scheduled to be a pre pre pickup, drop in and a survey that goes out to all.
What about Essex parents whose children are like too young to like are in preschool or like?
Any Essex parents? Parents whose children are or may be attending.
But not a parent whose children are in high school or some high school.
I don't think they.
I don't want to check at the door.
Right, no, 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 I'm just, I really am just clarifying because I feel like we are under a microscope right now. Our district is under a microscope. Different, obviously, this will be an administrator who we're hiring and will be paid an administrator's salary. And there may be people who are interested in learning more about the process. And so I just wanted to clarify who these.
Reach pieces for.
Yes. Where people could learn more.
So the site visits.
Certain populations could learn more.
The site visits.
Okay.
Because we end up having a site visit for like a point at site visit where the community. Yeah, I'll be direct and say, there's not a. Anybody as well, I mean, certainly not going to check IDs at the door. Anybody is welcome to come. So if a Manchester parent really wants to come and offer an opinion, that's fine. I I listen, it's a listening session. It's not really a teach in about what the principal does, so to speak. We will post the job description. That gives you a really good sense of the breadth of the job. Um, and if anybody has a question about the role, sure, have them come to any of.
Well, then my follow up question was how are we publicizing this process? Knowing that an elementary school principal will work with students who are maybe not in our district yet. Right, if you have like an incoming kindergartner who goes to a private preschool, that child.
I'll give it, I'll give it some thought. Our method has been to do a direct parent outreach and then post everything to the web.
And if you post things to the M R S D accounts, we as part of our engagement can amplify that message. By sharing that information.
Especially without preschool.
Building project. I think I don't need to re re. The entirety of the eligibility and all of the modules. I think what I just wanted to put on the record tonight and remind the group. And anyone listening is, we are in the extremely early stages of the process. I've been getting some wonderful emails, people volunteering for committees. People, you know, suggestions about land and where we can site. And that's all going to come, but that's probably eighteen months away at this point. We're just beginning to work with MSBA. We haven't even officially started our eligibility period. So our period of eligibility starts in March and it's going to run through November. And that's the time period in which we. Need to show our readiness to be accepted into the full program. We do that, as I said at our last meeting, through a series of documents that we need to fill out and that's kind of on the on the management side. To get some things filled out and submitted and then the communities need to show that they're ready to take on the project by funding the feasibility study. The questions I think that people are most interested in right now are, you know, how do I become on the committee? And this is similar to the question that Kate asked. We're preparing for the beginning of February to put kind of the all points bulletin out and that will go out. Press release, news news blast and then post it on the websites. Essentially, there's an interview process for becoming a member of the School Building Committee. That will run through the Facility Subcommittee, so we'll put out a request for interest. People need to submit a letter of interest and credentials. We have a template to fill out to ensure that we have different types of backgrounds represented on the committee. The Facility Subcommittee reviews the credentials and then they meet with the individuals. Then they propose a slate of appointees to this full committee who appoints the building committee. And then at that point, we do nothing here and everything gets turned over to the 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 building committee.
How many people?
Oh, I think we had fifteen to twenty last time. It's a large, large group. It includes, I was remiss in not mentioning, it does include representatives from each of the town governments as well as the town administrators. They. I'm trying to think of what they, they did not participate throughout the Full Memorial Project. They were kind of comfortable. So some of it will get sorted out, but we will be happy. I was kind of chuckling with the standing. I I'm going to have to do a lot of scheduling work to try to figure out how we're going to put all of these in. But we do need to get a facility subgroup going for thought, not, we don't have to discuss it tonight. But when we formed the last building committee, it was the Elementary Facility Subcommittee that became the appointees of the school committee. Through that body, so that's something for this group to discuss. So that's forming the committee, which will be happening probably throughout February and into March. All the fun things like, are we renovating or rebuilding? Where are we going to site it? You know, are we going to do a gym? Will it be a community center? That's all part of the feasibility study. So before we even get to that, we we have to commit the funds because we need to hire the program. The project manager and an architect to start us down that process. So more to come on that. I think the whole thing together is going to bring us. In this fall of twenty six, before we're looking at the final designs for both. So it's going to be a couple of years. About it, it's just gonna take.
This is the process.
This is the.
For MSBA.
Yes. And I just want to say thank you to the facility team. It was, you know, nice to have. Almost two years, but they have been working very hard from Sunday forward, trying to keep the place ready to open. And we took a little extra time on Monday morning. I hope that was, that message got out to everybody. Please tell people if they aren't getting any of their communications, they should let us know. But they did a fantastic job just getting the school ready and it's it's nice for us to sit back a little bit, but I know they were going full tilt. So just thanks to the hard work.
On that note, I will say thank you to you for sending out word about that when you did, rather than waiting until six o'clock or five o'clock the next morning. It made a big difference in our household to know that we had that to ours. And I have friends in other districts who were lamenting finding out at six oh five when six thirty would be the.
It made a big difference not to hear my kids ask me one more time.
There was gonna be school tomorrow.
Yeah, so thank you.
Well, I was looking at getting any texts or anything from the group. I'm like, they're very laid back about the whole snow piece.
Oh, I assure you, texts were happening. They just weren't going to you because we know you have to make your choice.
So we've started in the newsletter, in the monthly newsletter, there's the information on kind of what the snow process is. If at all possible, we'll always call it the night before. Sometimes it just doesn't, it's too iffy. And last year was a very iffy year, but that's always the preference for everybody.
Great. Thanks. Thank you very much. All right, then we are on to continued business. I will note that we are, based on our estimates, we're about twenty minutes behind, but I think that's okay. Because we did cover a lot of ground and it is important every once in a while to take some time with those subcommittees. So I think that was valuable. I would like to invite Ms. Groey up for her conversation on the High School Program of Studies.
Be so speedy, you will be ahead of schedule. In no time.
Sorry.
Do something about these bros.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Hello.
So I'm here to request your approval for next year's Program of Studies. And I outlined in the memo some of the changes that were made. So first being the School Counseling Department, so the the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has changed. The name of guidance to a more all encompassing school counseling. And other schools have adopted that term as well, similar to when foreign language became world language. It's just, it defines their role a little bit better. I actually printed out a little pamphlet if you wanted to read more about that. But just just to update and bring it more up speed and up to code with how other schools are. Announcing and naming their department and then there were changes in there as well, just to reflect timelines and current policies. For example, when AP, when AP payments are due and those those deadlines, just to reflect what the calendar year would look like. The Visual Arts Department, so the course pathways have changed for Visual Arts and they've done a little bit of revamping and renaming. Their courses, which actually does allow more students to access the curriculum. So the previous pathway, it was it was very specific as to the order in which students could take courses. And and there's a finite number of courses and they developed a way so that these courses can be taken out of sequence. And they can be taken, there's just more options for the students, so they can kind of go this way instead of just straight down. And it was gonna, it's gonna help us in terms of electives and it's just gonna help the students in terms of their choice. And the naming of the courses is kind of honed in on what to expect out of that course, so they can take something that might be a little bit more to their liking. They also, we removed AP Art History from the Program of Studies because it's just been lack of interest over the years. And we still offer AP courses in art, so we figured we should just take that out. It's not something we've offered for a while. And because of that, Studio Art has been removed and those two courses, Video Filmmaking and Digital Art and Graphic Design, has been added. And that new, that's on page sixteen if you want to take a look at that, but the new pathway is right there. English Department has added a new course called Literature of Oppression and Resistance in Black America. So this is part of our twelfth grade quarterly offerings. We also changed the word that said elective, the twelfth grade, instead of having grade twelve English. That it takes quarterly offerings and when we name them electives, I think it takes on a little bit different of a term. And people think that they're not necessarily requirements, but senior English is very much a requirement. So the students will take and choose something in each term. So this is a new course we're going to have for our full, our twelfth grade offerings. And the American Western course description was just changed to better reflect what they're offering in that course. The Music Department, the wording of the Survey of Music, the wording of Chorus and Acapella, those course descriptions have changed. Just to accurately reflect those offerings, to talk more about the performances they do, to list them accurately, make any changes that were needed. And the Math Department changed their Quantitative Reasoning course description to also accurately reflect what's going on there. There's a lot more of financial literacy happening in that course. So a shout out to anyone thinking about next year, senior year, taking quantitative reasoning to consider that. Because we want to keep that naming, we want to keep the name quantitative reasoning and not have it called financial literacy. But Mr. Brown in particular, who teaches it this year, has done a lot of work on making it a financial literacy class. And to be talking to the students about, you know, fun things like interest rates and taxes and all that good stuff that. Yes, that we talk about, so. And then I just highlighted what's not going to be offered, but remaining there. So that nine eleven and the War on Terror course runs every other year. That's been happening for a few years and that's opposite facing history on ourselves. So this year, the nine eleven and War on Terror course is being offered, so next year we'll be facing history. And then these courses that I've listed there, they're just apt, there's lack of interest. You know, in the interest of being as efficient as possible and to and to hone in on what we do offer and. Is are as robust as possible, we decided to take these courses. They're still in there, but it says right on them, they're not going to run them. And we'll, I'll talk to the department chairs next year and in other years to say, is it time for us to take these courses out and make room for new ones? But it does say right on the banner that we're just not going to offer. Are you taking questions? Of course I'm taking questions. Oh, and on a side note, when you do see the Program of Studies, this is, I'm very excited about this. Kami will attest, I matched the green in the logo perfectly on the banners, so it's all about branding, right?
Care deeply about those.
Yes, so it's same exact green.
I'm coming to you with my bunch of documents.
Okay, committee, any questions? I know I have a question.
Yes.
The courses that won't be running this year due to lack of interest, the one that especially catches my eye because it starts with the foundations of technology and engineering. Are any of these precursors to other courses that people may have difficulty accessing if they haven't already taken it?
Right. None of these are precursors, are precursors. So I can still take a technology course and not have to take foundations of technology and engineering.
Great.
So yeah, they're not blocking anyone from pursuing a pathway at all.
Thank you. Go ahead, Anna.
So to Diego, Diego's point earlier about the the class size that is smaller. And if we cancel them, they might have implication to, you know, the following years because they might be more interested. You know, any of those courses, do you feel like if you're good about it, to eliminate it now, it won't be. It might not be like a lot more interest in the future.
These courses, so these ones in particular, like for example, AP, the art art history. Tamra felt very confident that we, because we have the other AP offerings, we haven't offered AP Art History. We chose to remove that from the program because it's not something that has had interest over a number of years. This one, these courses still are in the Program of Studies, it just says above it, not course not offered. And that's something that the department chairs have talked about because over years it had, they have maybe fallen by the wayside. This is, again, my first year with this, so I want to see where this is going. It's sometimes more difficult if we remove these courses to eat, to get them back in. Sometimes isn't quite so simple. Or also it may, like Diego's point, someone, we may have a faction of students that come up and say, we want to take cultural anthropology and archaeology. And we and we know it's been offered before. So I'm always careful to remove something, but to say it's not offered, what I think is going to do is help the schedule. Because instead of having a wayward student or two.
Yeah.
Sign up for this course and then we have to move them anyway. They know now what is being offered to them. I think it's going to help. Make us build, help us build a more comprehensive schedule.
It's interesting to me because that cultural anthropology and archaeology, I know from having a sixth grader right now. That they're when they're piloting, right, this new investigating history and a lot of it starts with that. So I will be very interested to find out if that bubble of students, then like, is the one that says, we want this back. Because that was so interesting in sixth grade when we were looking at all those.
It's a good point.
Learning about the Iceman.
It's a good point.
So keeping in mind that this is something we need to vote on right now is the time for clarifying questions about.
Sorry, that wasn't a clarifying question.
That was fine, that was fine. Erica, do you have questions?
I have one very small question, just curious. I noticed that there's both a geometry and a fundamentals of geometry. Can you just help me understand what the difference is?
So they're both targeted as CP level courses, geometry and fundamentals of geometry. That's the same for algebra as well. Fundamentals courses sometimes don't, will will stay and just kind of go through the fundamental. Then maybe not go in as in depth as a another CP course or as an honors course. So it's really left to just the fundamentals of that subject. It's something we keep in our offerings if we have. Have students that want to take it, typically speaking, you know, I don't, I don't know how how much it's been offered in the past few years. But it's something I would keep in there because they are, even though they're both CP, they are two different courses.
So you, I that was gonna be my next question. You don't know if that was offered in the past, like, do we have any sense of whether we get three levels taken in?
It's it's more based on the need of the students. That's a course that we keep in based on like students' needs and what and what would best fit for certain students.
That's a course that we keep in based on like students' needs and what, and what would best fit for certain students, a certain, the certain student population.
Okay, thanks.
Julie, do kids typically choose to take that course? Or is it a recommendation of counselor, maybe a support personnel that might assign them to that?
Yes, so that course is not something like, I don't want to take geometry, I'm gonna take fundamentals. Instead, it would be something that the student's team would determine that would be their best fit for them.
Any other questions?
So I'll just, I'll just say I appreciate the shifts in the art pathway. But just to, just to clarify, I'm gonna follow up on Anna, your point. Just because the course is in the program of study, you still have the ability to not offer it if there's not enrollment for it. So it's not like these have to run or, you know, you're, you have the option to shift things.
Exactly, exactly.
These are, these are the courses that you have the, you have the approval to offer and schedule if there's
Yes.
student body for it.
Right, I have, there's, there are teachers here that are, that can teach this to the best of their ability and we have that. But it doesn't mean that it's necessarily gonna run. It's usually just that and when we start to schedule and that's when that will all kind of play out and shake out. So just because a certain amount of students sign up for a course does not necessarily mean it's gonna run.
Thanks.
All right. There are no further questions. I, I make a motion that we approve the Manchester, Manchester Essex Regional High School Program of Studies for the 2024, 25 academic year. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? On your favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, see?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And continuing on? Committee to join us. Athletics fees review. Hello. Thank you. Right.
Really nice graphics.
Thank you.
All about branding. You've got skills.
Big fan. Try. So I want to point out, so I'm here to review the athletic fee structure for fiscal year 25. Reviewing the fees from fiscal year 23. So I want to point out disclaimer, it'll say 23 to 2024, but this is actually based off the numbers from 2022 to 2023. Because this year is still in progress. All right, so our agenda, so I'm just a few bullet points going over what I'll be covering in my presentation. So key takeaways, participation highlights, spending overview, our funding of sources, user fees, and then my recommendations today. So the athletic department's overall takeaway from compiling all of the data in the presentation is that we need to examine our revenue and expense options as our user fee collections continue to decline. We rely on our user fees to sustain our well rounded athletic programs. But as collections decline, alternative options are becoming more essential. Raising fees by a recommended two and a half percent rate each year, starting with fiscal year 25, does help solve the problem in the short term. But as inflation increases and other variables are implied, we will continue the operating and deficit in our revolving fund even with an increase. So number two on the slide, another recommendation would be to examine an alternative transportation method to reduce operating costs, especially the programs that are operating in smaller in size. Ready? Yep. So in 2022 or 2023, the athletic department saw a total of 624 roster spots filled on our athletics program. That number includes middle and high school students and programs. This number does not include Rockport students that are participating on our cooperative football team or our cooperative cross country team. We are a whole school for Rockport in both of those programs. And again, those numbers are not reflected in our participation data graph. It's also important to note that this number did not include the students that participate as guests on our other cooperative teams such as gymnastics, boys and girls, ice hockey and outdoor track. If we were to include that number, it'd be an additional 59 students. Since these programs operate independently from Manchester Essex Regional High School, we did not include them in our analysis because their fees for those programs are contributed to those districts. So as indicated in the graph, the sports with the highest enrollment include soccer, lacrosse and basketball, mainly because there's a girl, boys elementary soccer, lacrosse and basketball. Sports with the lowest enrollment are sports that we're constantly keeping an eye on to assess the long term viability of those programs. If the numbers drop below a certain threshold, they are subject to being cut for that year. And then we do a bigger push to see if we can vitalize that program for the following year. Alpine ski, I think the biggest issue is the lack of snow. And I fully understand that we have not had the best ski season in ski Bradford the last couple of seasons. So for example, last year, we did cut the boys alpine ski program due to lack of interest. We tried to bring it back this year. We actually formed a cooperative team with Triton to see if that would help boost our numbers. It did not do as well as we thought it would, so we're just keeping an eye on that program. Also, middle school golf, as you can see, was a program that was close to being canceled for this upcoming fall. So we conducted an interest survey back in May of 2022. And we asked, or yeah, 2023, sorry. And we asked grades, rising grade seven and eight families, if they'd be interested in participating in that program. There was a lot of interest shown at that time and we did jump enrollment this past fall from just five students to eight. So the interest is coming back from middle school golf. So it is a reason we're keeping it. I also think it's important to note on the scrap that our three middle school programs, middle school field hockey, cross country and basketball are on the higher end of overall participations and enrollment. And I think that's fantastic. Those programs are doing very well. So staffing, so with participation numbers in mind, the athletic department is always mindful of the number of paid coaches hired to operate each program in order to maintain a reasonable athlete to coach ratio. The majority of our programs operate with one paid coach per level, per team. The volunteer assistant coaches are often utilized to assist the head coach in all matters related to discipline and supervision. Some of those programs that utilize volunteer assistants are soccer, basketball, football, baseball, softball, cross country, golf and lacrosse. So I can, so you can see, it's a lot. Wherever we can find volunteers, we hire them because we think it's always helpful for the students to have more adult supervision and then also more coaching. Collision sports such as football, so collision sports would be sports outside that you're like constantly colliding. So the ice hockey, football and boys lacrosse are great collision sports. I've classified within the MIAA. They are the exception to the one coach per level policy due to the nature of the sport and the inherent safety precautions required for those sports. That being said, I do recommend and I'm going to continue to look into it with our budget to hire a boys lacrosse assistant coach just due to the nature of that sport. And we currently do not have one. That's something that I'll continue to explore within the budget allocation that we're provided. Some of the other outliers are swimming and alpine skiing. Alpine ski has a paid assistant coach, even though they have smaller numbers due to the need for increased supervision at a mountain. You need one coach at the top and one coach at the bottom to supervise. Do not want to leave one skier stranded at the top of the mountain. It's just always good to have two. And then swim, we also added an assistant coach for this year due to increased students' interest in swimming and diving last year. And then we also have a diver. It's an off, even off, more off site location. So swim is at the Sterling, Warren C and Beverly dive is at the Ipswich YMCA. We also need that coach to be able to supervise over at the Ipswich YMCA when the diver is there. So lastly, just going back to the participation highlight slide, I noted the incredible participations at the middle school level. And with such few middle school programs available for grades six through eight, particularly for grade six, our participation numbers in these sports continue to increase yearly. And as they increase, we hire more staff, but our budget to do so is minimal. So we're playing around with that as well to see how we can best support those programs and those students. Ready? So fewer multi-sport athletes. So earlier I mentioned our overall participation number in 2022 to 2023 was 624 students. That number included middle and high school students and is not the unique participation number. So that could be a student that participates in a fall, winter and spring sport. They're counted three times in that number. So these are the unique participation numbers from last year. For fiscal year 23, it was 410 students, which equates to 280 high school students and 130 middle school students out of a total high school population of 417 last year. That is, that is 67% of the overall high school population, which is an increase from fiscal year 22 of 1%. So even though we do have a slight decrease in the average number of sports per athlete from fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 23, just meaning that students are taking less sports per year, we still have a lot of students participate in our overall athletics programs. So with that, what, why is this number important? Since our user fee model reduces the rate per student based on the number of sports they play, with 15 students overall participating and then fewer students playing multiple sports, the athletic department saw a decrease of 5% in our user fee from one year to the next. Yeah. It would be best if we could get through it and then take questions at the end. Excellent. So multi-year spending overview. So moving into the financial review and what these participations, neat numbers mean and the overall spending of the athletic department. For those of you who are overall, who are unfamiliar with the athletic department budget, it's broken down into two sections with the general fund and the revolving fund. I know everyone in this room is familiar with what that structure looks like, but listeners with yours from home might not be. So the general fund is the portion of the budget that the school district is responsible for and that allocates for athletics. Revolving fund is consistent of our user fees and then gate revenue. So with the general fund, as you can see, the general fund covers coaching stipends, salaries and custodial expenses. We also moved two expenses previously in the revolving fund to the general fund as our user fee collections have declined. And those are contracted officials and athletic conferences and dues. That's that the goal is to always spend the funds in the revolving fund first. But if there, so if there are excess funds, which there haven't been in a few years, but if there are those two categories, we then just move back to the revolving fund. And like I said, unfortunately, that hasn't been the case, but then that is why they are out back in the general fund. So the revolving fund is the portion of the budget that covers contracted services and that includes our athletic trainer, transportation, supplies and materials and rentals. User fee collections are projected at $235,000 each year. However, we have not hit that mark for several years. To make up for some of this lost revenue, I did increase ticket prices, as I know some of our athletic families have noticed. We used to be $3 and $6, now we're $5 and $7. And in just one year, in doing so, we nearly doubled our gate revenue, which was a huge help for the lack of user fees that we've been collecting and for those losses. We also have seen tremendous success in our teams in the postseason. We received high power rankings and high ratings at the end of the season. So we're able to host a lot of MIAA postseason events, which also contributes to the other revenue column. So every event we host from round of 16 on, we do get some kickback from the MIAA, which does help support our revenue as well. So that varies year to year depending on the success of our teams. But we've been very fortunate and very strong programs to be able to have that additional revenue as well. Our biggest challenge in the revolving fund is keeping up with the increased costs associated with pool and sailboat rentals, supplies and transportation. Transportation costs vary significantly depending on our success in the postseason, especially with the new structure of statewide tournament, where we've seen an increased need for cross state travel, coach buses and other variables to that extent. Supply costs also continue to increase year to year without any major changes to what we're ordering. It's just, that's the way it goes. The supply chain issues, all of our expenses, they're just going up. Like I said, doesn't change much year to year, but if we are in a uniform cycle, we'll see an increase in spending in that category. So last year and this year, we're in the middle of a uniform cycle, as I'm sure some of you are aware. We do, just for further clarification of the uniform cycle, our uniform cycle operates in a four year timeline. So varsity uniforms are placed every four years. Once the varsity uniforms are retired, they're moved to JV and JV two, livable or middle school. So that's just the way it goes. And then I built a staggered structure so that we're not ordering all programs uniforms in the same fiscal year. It's just a couple of programs, we're gonna be able to balance it all out. Well, next slide.
Sorry. Somebody slipped a switch.
All right, so overall spending notes, just to summarize everything that I just said. But after taking a closer look at all the numbers, the general report is that our spending in the general fund in fiscal year 23 was 47,000 under projected budget. And that's largely due to eliminated positions based off enrollment and new hires that were newer coaches being placed at step one, which was under budget projection. In the revolving fund, our projected, we were over our projected budget by $1.50,000. And then that third part, we're under 10K, which basically equates to our user fee collections were under budget projection by $27,599. And while the increased gate revenue helped make up for some of those losses, we were still under revenue projection by $10,000 and ended the year in an overall deficit of 11K, even though we were only over our revolving fund projection of 1.5. So there's clearly a gap here that we have to find in close. So now where we fall when compared to other north shore school districts. First and foremost, our budget allocation of 60, 40 is in line with what other districts are doing. Over time, as our user fee collections decline, the general fund portion grows, but that's a short term solution and doesn't solve the long term problem. And that since we are not looking to increase the portion of the general fund, we need to look at our user fees. So in order to do so, it's important to compare with some local districts within the KAN area on the north shore. So comparing, so this graph illustrates where we fall compared to other KAN league schools who follow a similar pay per sport model. Most schools have a flat rate per sport, other than North Running. We follow is the most similar model to us with a reduction in rate per sport per student. Linkfield and Ipswich have a one time fee for all sports. So students could pay that full fee of $650 to play only one sport or they're playing all three seasons. So if they're playing one sport, it's more than our fee. If they're playing three, it's less. And then looking at our family cap, this is all based on high school numbers. Here's a graph demonstrating where it's from in relation to other KAN league and northeastern conference schools. So our high school family cap is currently the third highest in the area at 1515. I think that's an important note. So I know there's a lot of information there. It's really hard to read, so I broke it down into three basic bullet points. So taking a look at all of the data, all the fee structures within the KAN league, the northeastern conference, it's evident that we are ready as a school district to have some of the highest fees in our area. And what this tells me is that we don't have a lot of wiggle room to increase our fees and make up for the yearly loss revenue. Another option shown in this chart is a tiered fee structured by sport. Schools with the structure charge a higher fee for the sports that cost the district more money and have higher operating costs. For us, the sports with the highest operating costs are the programs with the most equipment, could be football and boys lacrosse, because they require yearly renewal and reconditioning, sailing and then swimming. If we move to this model where we have it tiered by sport, I fear participation in these sports would decline. And that's not our overall goal for the health of the overall athletic department. So based off all of that, here are my recommendations heading into fiscal year 25 for the athletics department. So we're recommending an approximate two and a half percent increase in user fees started with fiscal year 25. It's important to note, these numbers that I'm suggesting and recommending are not an exact two and a half percent increase. They're just an adjustment based off where we've been at to try to get us to a point where I think it's a good starting point to then have a two and a half percent increase after these numbers aren't stated. So currently, our high school first sport fee is 460. I'm recommending we increase that to 475. For middle school, it's 370, the increase to be to 385. So it's $15 for both the high school and middle school student. A second sport fee increase from, for the high school level, it's currently at 290, increasing to 325. So a bigger jump for the second sport. At the middle school level, the second sport is 230, so it's a smaller jump to 250. And then the third sport is the smallest jump of them all, because if we could get more students participating in more sports, that would be great. So going for the high school from 115 to 125 and then from 95 at the middle school to 100. The second recommendation is to increase our family cap only to $1,600. This is a very easy breakdown for a family. So if a high school family has two students that play two sport, you can decap the rest of it, be free. So it's a much easier number to compute, to try and figure out when they'll hit the cap. For the middle school level, it would just go to 1250. Only seven families hit the family cap in fiscal year 23, so I think that's an important note. And then 8% of our families qualified for free or reduced athletic fees last year. So that wouldn't be a big impact on our fee structure either. And then my last point, and I mentioned this on the slide before, is that paper court is our preferred model for user fee collection. It's easiest for students to switch sports, but first couple of weeks. So students So students might come out for cross-country, but they might not like it and they want to play soccer. They can easily switch. They're not jumping or reducing their fee. And same with football, soccer. It's just an easy switch across the board. And then the goal is to keep participation numbers high across all sports because we want a very well-rounded program that meets the needs of a lot of different students. So since raising user fees, in my opinion, won't close the gap entirely. I do think it's important to look at alternative revenue options. We did mention earlier, you all mentioned earlier, the signage around Highland Field. Um, I think that this could create a lot of revenue for the athletic department and asking local businesses to help support our programs. But even if we didn't want to do local businesses, we could look to have families buy posters for their students that are coming around the field that says, "Go Charlie, we love you. Have a great season," stuff like that, that you see in a yearbook or you see in an arts department brochure or flyer. Just simple things like that could help generate revenue and they'd be, I think, a pretty nice look around the field, nicer than some advertisements, if that's something we'd be interested in. Um, we also have some capital projects coming up within athletics. Our school board is a little outdated. We have a couple of years, but I'm just planning ahead. Our press box needs some work and our weight room and fitness rooms need some work. So these are just big capital projects. If we could give us some naming rights to those, have some big sponsorships come in, I think that would help mitigate the costs that are coming um, in the next few years. And then another option is iSponsor, an app. It's very easy. There's little legwork that anyone would have to do, but we would, um. I'll just explain it. I wrote it all down since you're trying to do it this way. So it's a school-friendly app that can assist with fundraising. It's similar to fundraisers that students already use for their class fundraisers where they ask Chipotle or another local restaurant to contribute ten percent of their sales on a certain day to the group. So in essence, it would turn everyday spending money into fundraising dollars. So brands are already signed on to iSponsor. Manchester Essex Athletics would just make a group. And then it's families would sign on to that group and anything they spend, a percent of that would go to the athletic department. So those brands like Nike, Under Armour, just everyday brand brands that you're already using, a portion of that would come to the athletic department. As long as you sign on and use the app. Um, another topic I wanted to bring up was the potential for team fundraising. Our athletics boosters and Grid Art Club are incredible supporters of our athletic department. They're very grateful for all of their efforts and their support for student athletics and programs through their fundraising efforts. Um, unfortunately, our research club is struggling to find volunteers and there's a fear our booster program could be in jeopardy in the next couple of years. Given that the Eboard member students are graduating and we'd love to have volunteers, a little plug for boosters, it'd be great. But this is a legitimate concern that our boosting program might not be as strong in a couple of years and this is a great fundraising avenue for us. So to help mitigating, mitigate this, I'm proposing that we look into the ability for change to fundraise. The school committee currently has a policy against team individual fundraising, so I'm just asking for an exploration of this idea. All fundraisers would be overseen by the athletic department and there would be a limit to the amount each team could fundraise. Runners would need to be designed with a specific goal in mind. So if the boys lacrosse program wants to buy warm-up jerseys, which is not a need for that program. They would just want it because they want to keep it with the program. They don't want to ask families to buy warm-up or not even warm-up jerseys, practice jerseys. Then that's something that the team could fundraise for with approval by the school committee for that purchase for their team. These are the items that the teams are currently requesting within the boosters. And like I said, we're just worried about what will happen to the boosters, so having this as a backup name would be great. And then lastly, I would like to look into the option of paid advertisements. Um, paid advertisements could take the form of ads during a live stream game. So we live stream a lot of our RC games online through Huddle to YouTube. So within Huddle, they already have a mechanism that allows for advertisements and it's very easy with local businesses for them to sign on. And we're already live streaming, so it's just a pretty seamless way for them to, for us to generate revenue. And then another option is during our music playlist. Neptune is similar to Spotify, but it's made specifically for schools and it pre-screens all the songs that a team could put on a playlist to make sure that it is clean for school grounds and school events. And then within that, they have opportunities for advertisement, similar to Spotify ads that pop up and that could be a local business that puts a two to three sentence advertisement together that we play in the middle of a pre-game playlist or in halftime or something of that nature. It's just another option that's really easy from a legwork standpoint, but provides additional revenue for the athletic department. Again, these are just options, but I'm going to write out their full streams for athletics. And then the last one, so another option that I think is worth exploring is an alternative transportation. Which would be district-owned mini-buses or vans. Several districts around us have started using vans and mini-buses due to the increased transportation costs and a lack of available bus drivers. We have a lot of two-thirty trips that go uncovered because there are just no bus drivers available to take those trips. And for programs like golf, where daylight's a problem, they need to get to the course by three-thirty. Having a mini-bus that they can just hop on and get to the course right away would be phenomenal and they are a small-numbered program that would utilize it every day. Um, this option would be excellent, like I said, for small-numbered programs. So for our tennis program, our sailing program, skiing right now, because they are a smaller-numbered program. JV two basketballs, golf, track invitationals, swim states and sectionals, there's just still a lot of programs that could benefit from something like that, that would help reduce our costs. Because every time we send a bus, it's a full bus. It's not a mini-bus and it's the full expense as if we were to send our full soccer game somewhere. Um, it could also be utilized by other clubs and programs within the high school. So like thinking like robotics, math team, debate team, drama fest. These are events that typically happen on the weekend. We don't have as many smaller-numbered trips on the weekend, so the mini-bus are going to be available for them. That's just another option to cut down on their costs. And then I did a little bit of research, but the cost of purchasing used mini-buses is about forty to fifty K. And then I did some math and research of what we spent last year for these small-numbered programs. And we spent roughly twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighteen, just in one year on smaller trips. That in just two years approximately, we can make up for the purchase of just one mini-bus van. There are additional costs associated with owning our own bus and van, which would be like gas, insurance, maintenance or repairs. But I do think it's worth exploring this option to see what other kind of costs we could reduce going forward. And that is my presentation. So I'd like to open up any questions.
All right.
So we have lots.
That was incredibly thorough. Well, thank you, thank you. Um, I, I do expect we have questions, but I also want to make sure that we're clear on what we need to accomplish tonight. So we do need to take a vote on the fee structure in particular. Um, everything else we can parse out if we need to, because I'm thinking some of these things I know are much broader conversations and different.
Okay, yeah, I'm aware of that. So there are options and they're exploratory. They're not being voted on tonight.
So the vote tonight is really just to increase fees.
Right, yes. Okay. So that being the case, I, I would like us to do our best to limit our, um.
How much should we pay for those?
Can I redo my presentation?
Those are awesome.
What's a sport? I don't, I don't want to answer that. I'm gonna go with yes.
I'm gonna go with yes.
You're winning.
What is it? What are those?
But so there were more about jerseys. Our, our basketball, yeah. Our boys' basketball program got more about jerseys.
So.
Self-paid, self-paid.
Yeah.
Not from the athletic department.
Donated something that the athletic department pays for.
Who donated them?
Some parents. Some parents and, uh.
To those ones, to the basketball program, boys and girls?
Yep, yes, offered to both.
Okay, yes, that's lovely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Happening right now.
I, why?
So are we?
Sorry, hold on. Let me just finish the, the setting the scene.
So I, for tonight's purpose, what we need to vote on is to increase the, whether or not we want to increase the fee structure. Alter the fee structure as presented, so to increase those fees. Everything else will be additional things. So why don't we start with the fees themselves? Let's ask our specific clarifying questions right now, then we'll take a motion and discussion.
Do I keep going back to the slide with the recommendations?
Um, it's on.
After this?
After that. Right there.
So did you do a two and a half percent increase, but then rounded them off just to be clear?
Round them off. The only exception to that was the second sport. We increased it a little bit more.
So any clarifying questions regarding the fee structure?
Clarifying or questions?
They should be, all right, is there? No, go ahead. I, I, we're not in discussion. Ask your questions of Kami so that we can then move to a motion and discussion. Kate, go ahead.
Oh, I guess it minds discussion.
Do you have a question for Kami?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
So a couple. So the, the cap on the fees.
Yep.
You mentioned that we are the third highest, but they are eight percent qualify for free overviews. So how is that eight percent compared to out of this? Are we offering them for, since our fees are?
Yeah, so our, the way that free reduced athletic fees work is any family that qualifies for free reduced lunch also qualifies for free reduced athletic fees. I don't know the number in other districts to see what that would look like.
Um, we don't determine that level. That's it. That's it.
Um, the. Two point four, the, the fee increase. So, so we are doing the first sport, second sport in, the fourth sport. So I'm wondering, um, would it make sense, would it be increased to be more for the sport that had less enrollment? For example, I hate to pick this, but the middle school golf, for example, in the last month with the NBA triple. Would those people, would it make sense for the smaller sports to be?
I think that we're getting to discussion, even so you're, you're getting to points that I am, so.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Erica.
I, I'm confused by whether I'm asking a question or, I have a question. Can I ask it now or do we want to move on to discussion?
No, we're taking questions right now for it. As an example, here would be a clarifying question. Are you suggesting in this proposal that what we're approving is this one-time uh, increase? Or are you suggesting that this should be a two-point-five percent increase each year down the line?
So I'm suggesting it should be an increase each year down the line as costs keep increasing at that rate.
Yep.
Roughly each year. Um, this was actually a recommendation that I was doing my research that was adopted back in fiscal year seventeen by the school committee and then was never enacted. So I'm just bringing it back up to then restart fiscal year twenty-five.
Correct. So we're, so what we are voting on then is to, um, approve the fee structure increase, which includes a year after year. Okay, thank you.
I think this is a clarifying question. Um, do you have any concern that in raising fees, we are going to deter participation and therefore defeat our ultimate objective of increasing revenue?
I am concerned and that's why I only want to increase by a small amount each year so that it isn't as hard. It won't close the gap of the deficit like I was talking about. But I don't think the small increase will deter participation, but if we start to tier and separate sports, that will deter participation much more. Any other clarifying questions? Go ahead.
I'm picking up on Anna's point. So I think our low-income rate is like thirteen percent as a district, but we only have eight percent participating. Do you have a sense of whether or not fees are deterring those students from participating? Is it, might it be an issue of not knowing that they can get?
I haven't heard from families saying that these are deterrent. Um, every communication we send out provides the information about free reduced fees. And I always encourage families to reach out if they are concerned and we work with them to best fit their needs. A lot of families use payment plans, which is also a great option. It's still the same fee, but we can create that and cater that or that payment plan, however that family needs. So it could be a family that just has one student wanting to play one sport and that would be the four-sixty fee. But we can spread that four-sixty fee out from September all the way until June. So they're paying a really small rate of maybe like fifty dollars or whatever they, it works for their family and their financial situation for that ten-month period. So we're really flexible with that and I haven't heard otherwise. It's a deterrent with fees that we have. Um, and with the free reduced fees, but it could be, I'm just not hearing from them. But we do work with families as best as we can, because we don't want these to be a deterrent.
Did you do the math of the dollar, the, the increase in revenue generated by two and a half percent being increased, if we have the same number?
Great question.
Yeah, it's okay if you didn't. I wondered how many dollars we were talking about. That's okay.
Athletics is going through what the rest of the district is going through, which is we've been holding steady at sixty-seven, seventy percent participation, but it's just fewer heads now.
Yeah.
So the fewer heads are generating less money.
Can we maybe still offer the same breadth of, because I have a lot that I feel like I want to discuss.
And I keep pouring my mind as clarifying questions.
Do you have actual questions?
Would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to, um, approve the user fee recommendations as presented.
Second. Discussion.
Yes. So we spend a lot of time talking and we get a lot of feedback from community members who are concerned about class size and why we are running classes of a certain size. When I see that some of our most expensive sports have the lowest enrollment, I wonder what process you have gone through to evaluate at what point a sport would just be cut or be co-opted with another, um, district or what alternatives we've looked into for something like, um, sailing or swim and dive that are lower enrollment and higher cost.
Great question. So the first question I ask, once our enrollment numbers come in and what I look at is can we compete with the number that we have? And if we can't compete, it's automatically, we have to cut the program and look for a cooperative team. So for ski, you need at least five to be able to compete at the varsity level for skiing. We've been above that, so it hasn't reached that point. And then I do a quick math of, okay, if we have twelve Alpine skiers, this is how much money they brought in from fees. This is how much money transportation would cost that program. Does that work? Does that add up? We're gonna run it. So for middle school golf last year, it was a really small number, but I did the quick math of how much money we spend on middle school golf. We don't provide any transportation. They don't compete. They just go to Sun and Air three days a week for X amount of time. This is how much the rental is gonna cost. Does their user fee make up for it? And last year, the threshold was five. If they drop below that, that program would have been in jeopardy and we would not have been able to operate. So that's kind of how I make that decision is can we compete? And then does the user fee map match up for what that cost per sport is? For sailing, we are looking into potential options for cooperative additional schools to come in and help support us, especially going into this year. One option is wearing or working groups and conversations with them to see if they can join us and come help some of our numbers here. But again, if they drop below a certain threshold, they will be considered.
But aren't we saying that the, the user fees don't support the programs, right? There's a deficit.
Yes.
Historically, the goal with user fees was to offset, um, about fifty percent, fifty to sixty percent, and that's the goal.
Yep.
With fifty percent of the cost being borne by the district, particularly anything having to do with contractual obligations around stipends and salaries. That's all district. Right, responsibility.
Give me forty percent.
Uh, sixty, sixty is the general.
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 Yeah. Sorry, I probably said it wrong.
It just, so. Not to get too personal. So I have a sixth grader this year. He was vaguely interested in running cross-country. Ended up hurting his foot, so it was a non-issue.
Yeah.
But when I saw that it was going to cost over three hundred dollars for me to enroll him in cross-country, which is a really cheap sport to, to operate. I didn't push the issue with him, you know? I wasn't like, oh, you should definitely do this. Go out for the team, give it your best shot sort of thing. Because to me, the costs to participate, and, and we're sports family, so we spend. Because to me, the costs to participate, and, and we're a sports family, so we spend a lot of money on sports.
Yeah.
But that cost seemed disproportionate to the opportunity provided by it.
Yeah.
Which goes to the tiering of more expensive sports.
Yeah.
People paying more for more expensive sports.
Well, I have a thought on that too, though, which is that, um, and, and I could be misremembering, Pam will, will check me if that's the case. But I know that, um, at a time, and maybe it was on the creation of the district, there really was a focus on making sure that things were equitable. And that if we ended up with like tiered things, you, you'd have people really stretching to not be able to play those expensive sports? And only being able to play the, the cheap sports. And so, uh, you know, a lot of this is really bringing to mind right now, um, our, our strategic plan and that we are about whole child. And, and so some of that equity portion comes to mind when we talk about, yeah, there are some that are more expensive than others. And there's, there's a reason that we don't do that and for a reason that it was decided that way to begin with.
That's something like sailing is an expensive sport.
Yeah.
And I sail, it's like, it's, people say it's like standing underneath the cold shower and ripping up hundred dollar bills. That is the sport of sailing.
To me, the question would be more of.
Right, we don't offer equestrian riding, we don't offer, you know, like. There are lots of expensive sports that we don't offer.
Sure.
And so, when I see expensive sports and I see a budget deficit and I see low enrollment.
Makes you want to.
Yeah, that's a different question, that's a fair point, that's different than the tiered, like I think those are two separate considerations.
Well, they're kind of related because it's an expensive sport.
Right, and I see your point when it's, when there's some under enrollment there. But I, I also see Teresa's point that we, I'm not sure we want to tier sports because then you're, you're tracking what sport a kid could in theory access.
I agree, I think that, but I think that the cost of operating that particular sport should be weighed when deciding whether we are.
Whether we're keeping it or not.
Keeping that sport.
Yep, so maybe a clarifying question would be, what is like the real thing offset for something like sailing?
What can you, like, what, how much of the, the user fees does that cover for sailing?
What's a deficit for sailing?
Yeah, like just sailing overall. I would say last year, I want to put like exact numbers on it because they don't have it in front of me. But from the rentals to maybe five K would probably be the rough estimate for, say, for sailing, just from the rentals, and then they don't have as many races as some of the other sports, which helps cut down on those costs.
So, the other part that we, we need to keep in mind too is similar to how, I mean, this just seems so parallel, I'm sure we're all feeling it, to the rest of the conversations we're having about classes and everything else. It's not, it's not our decision whether we offer a sport once it's already, I mean, to, to discontinue it necessarily.
Yeah.
Um, it's how you handle the resources that are allocated. And so, um, it's reasonable questions for us to ask for understanding, but in the end, um, it's about the fee structure. And I think for, my point for discussion would be, um, it's helpful to have recognition that there is a deficit here and open discussion of it. To have a strategy for, for handling the fee structure that recognizes that's not going to be the whole answer? And some other things that we can explore down the line separately from this conversation. So, to me, that's very well reasoned, thought out, and, and, um, and I appreciate that.
And just like for a sport like sailing, the enrollment has had a lot and has slowed a lot. We were state champions in twenty fifteen for sailing and it's, we're not that far off from twenty fifteen, we feel that way, but we're not. And this is just where we're at right now, it's not to say the number won't increase. But in the meantime, we're, we are looking at alternatives, either being a guest of another program or hosting another school. And I think that that's a conversation that, I mean, I'm already having right now to see what we can do to best meet the needs of our sailors. Because I'd say a half of those sailors are only sailors and that's the only sport that they do. And I don't want to take away that athletic program from those students when there are other options that I'm, I can look into, that will help.
We have multiple hands, I'm gonna go Erica, Anna, Jake.
Um, I, I know you've made your recommendation, but I just wanted to hear if, if you could, a little bit more about, one thing I thought was potentially attractive about the six hundred dollar kind of flat fee for athletic participation is from a revenue perspective, since we know most of our students, since it's like one point, like one point six sports, is that right?
Yeah, one point six.
Um, we do, we do better revenue wise, I assume by having that one and only sport be higher. Uh, as one of the families who did hit my family cap.
One eighty-seven.
I think, um, I just, I think that's a, it's, it would be a hard pill to swallow for anyone, six hundred dollars is a lot. It starts to feel like a club sport, but at the same time, it's, um, I just wonder if it helps the school more to think about doing one set fee? And I, I, obviously, this is your recommendation, so I just wanted to hear a little bit more about how you weigh those options.
Do you mean one set fee no matter how many sports you're playing?
Yeah, yeah, so you, so a couple, sorry, yeah, a couple of like.
I remember.
The limited model.
Got it.
I definitely thought about that and looked into that. Um, my fear in doing so is kind of exactly what you were saying, is students that run across country. I'm not gonna want to pay six hundred and fifty dollars to run across country for that one set. And I don't want to do that program.
I would pay six hundred and fifty dollars to not have to run.
Yeah, it's one of those situations where it's like, if we do six fifty, they're not gonna want to play that sport anymore. They're not gonna want to play tennis, I mean, tennis isn't a sport where it's even close to being low enrollment, but it is a lower cost sport. Because we have the courts here and I don't want those programs to go away because we have the one time fee. And I don't want those kids, yeah.
Is there any way?
Nope, sorry, we got a line.
Erica, then Anna, then Jake. Add me to the queue.
Got it.
Um, would this help? So, right now, we're in a discussion, one of the things in our policy thing we could look into is to open up the enrollment for the public school sports to the students that have, um, attend private school. Yeah, so would that help and how would that play into this?
So, that would just be for middle school. We wouldn't be able to do that for preschool because of MIA, MIAA regulations prohibiting that from happening unless you go through an extensive waiver process. And it's very hard to get approval, so it would just affect the middle school level and they would pay the same fees as any other middle school sport. So, if anything, it would just help that program.
For what it's worth, that policy request was in middle school, but we, but we're going to look at it as a, a full. Okay, it was one, two, Jake, Kate, Chris.
Pam, could you give it there, what's up? You gave it the, the recommendation for a second. So, I just want to be clear, for number one, the, the yearly fees, um, and I missed when I first read it, the yearly part of that stem. So, I appreciate you specifying that. So, what is highlighted in yellow for first, second, and third sports is just FY twenty-five? And then that would go two point five percent and FY twenty-six. So, is that also the case for number two? Or is number two, the family cap, just set at once and it stays there?
As of right now, I just want to set it and have it stay there.
Okay.
Because of how high it is.
Okay, thank.
Good question. It was Kate and Chris. Unless you need to reverse, Kate, she forgot.
Yeah, please go to Chris. I really just had a, a moment, go to Chris.
Uh, real quick, I just, uh, know last year we voted to have cheerleading use more, but I didn't see it on there, is that?
So, this was based off of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Cheerleading had thirty-one students, that was, that was awesome, and that unique participation number was very high. As of right now, where we're at with winter, a lot of our cheerleaders are just cheerleaders, so that helped our overall unique participation number a lot. So, thank you, it was fantastic.
Yeah, that's okay. Oh, and I guess I'm not sure if you really know this, but you know, you put up some comparables there, maybe not all the comparables I'd be interested in, but, um, you know, is there a reason why we are so high in our fees compared to other sports programs in different, you know, towns or districts? Or, you know, do you have a perception on that or?
Great question, I don't know how we got here, I just know that this is where we're at right now and we are start, this is our starting point. And where do we go from here? Um, I don't have the history on that and how we end up in the fee structure that we do. But when taking our current fee structure and comparing it to our leaders, this is, so it doesn't exactly answer your question. Am I, yeah.
I got it, we got it back.
Indefinitely, I want to say twenty, twenty fifteen was the last big review. That was when we in depthly looked at the different models, that was a models review. We looked at the tiered structure, we looked at the flat fee, then we looked at the fee per season. I think the history of ours model is that it is redistributive in nature to manage the breadth of the program. So, for a school of our size to have this many sport offerings is quite unique. I don't think Georgetown has the same breadth of offerings, or Rockport has the same breadth of offerings. So, it's part of our overall debate right now, which is we offer a lot of different sports, we sail and we ski, we have everything in between. Um, and to do that, we have a healthy fee structure that's designed to be redistributive and not just favoring one program or the other. So, that was kind of a conscious decision to bottle it this way. And there was a feeling at the time that people were comfortable with the fee and where they were at. Fees are actually coming down, I think, I think there's a push toward making athletics fully accessible again. Um, I would love to know how Essex Tech is doing it at a hundred dollars per student, but maybe they're only offering a few basic sports.
Well, they're not there over.
It's not a, I just, what's the breadth of their program? And we didn't ask you to do the, in this, so I'm not opening a cam, can of worms. But we haven't been increasing fees over time, um.
Well, that's probably concerning, I haven't been increasing our fees, because two and a half percent sounds like a small number, but over ten years, it turns out to be a decent sized number. Uh, but you know, inflation, like, I get that, but in general, since we haven't been increasing our fees, it's still, uh, it's been just surprising. And, yeah, so it was just a good question in general, I guess.
I remember my thing, still going to say it while I remember it because I believe it is my turn now, right? Okay. Um.
One more.
Okay, um, do any districts that you are aware of? Or have you ever considered offering a voucher for a student to try one sport the first season? I'm wondering if a student who's saying, you know what, I don't really know if I want to do cross country and, and parents are saying, well, I don't really want to pay four hundred dollars for you to do cross country and discover that you don't like it or whatever. But I feel like kids usually do end up loving being part of a team and that once they do it, they want to keep doing it. And so, if we were able to provide students with like one trial season of a sport, would there, would that boost participation?
It's a great.
Like a, or like a half off or something, or like a first, your first season of your first sport.
I guess I have two thoughts, one, there's a lot of ground to cover, so we might want to think about.
Yes.
Let's try to, yeah, the second is my pitch for middle school, middle school and a pure middle school model, you shouldn't be competing. And I don't know that every middle school travels for athletics. That would be the place where you don't charge a fee and give them an introduction to a sport.
Right.
On a club model or an intramural model where they may become interested and then play at the high school. I'm not advocating, but that, that's more common, what would happen.
I agree. I would also add that we have so many more sports offered in high school that I don't know that it exposes, it gives them the opportunity to explore.
I agree, it's just one, one way you could go about it.
I think it would depend on the criteria for which the vouchers would be issued because.
Right, if it's like, we know that you've been playing club soccer for the last five years and now you want to use your voucher for your first.
Yes, and the odds of them liking that sport are very high when they've been playing. And then are we looking into the background of every single kid that's applying for a voucher and that starts to get really complicated? Um, what we already have in place is like the two week grace period. So, if after two weeks you don't like the sport, you get a full refund. So, that's, that's kind of the compromise there, so it's like, try it, if you don't like it, you get a refund. Or if the family's worried about paying upfront, we could hold on to a check and wait to deposit it until after the two weeks.
I just don't, well, I, I want to honor the tangential relationship of that in this conversation. But given the time, I, let's, let's, let's tailor it to questions that we need answered to vote on this motion that is already before us. Is any, or, or discussion, discussion, not just question, discussion about it.
Yeah, I just didn't finish.
And then Erica, yeah.
And this isn't a hundred percent just on user fees in this vote, but so you brought up earlier advertising and it seemed like, I guess this is maybe just why I have here, maybe, tell me if it's a recommendation, but, uh, there are certain sports that have significantly greater ability to advertise the novel sports, like we brought up cross country.
We gotta call rabbit hole, that this is a conversation we're gonna have, but we can't have it tonight.
It, yeah, so as it relates to, you know, user fees, I'm just curious, in your head at this point, you know, when you talk about that, would it be so focused that, you know, fees generated for a particular sport from any revenue source would go to that sport or go to the full program? Does that work?
You mean with the advertising portion of it?
Any way that you would.
So, with the advertising portion in particular, and that method of fundraising, you know, and having an additional revenue stream, that would be distributed to all sports. It wouldn't be if it's on Highland field, the sports utilizing Highland field. It would be evenly amongst all to help make up for some of the deficit that we have with the user fee collection. For team fundraising, that would be individual teams and then those teams would get everything they want. So, cross country might not need to fundraise, but they also could want a brand new tent for all their invitationals, and that could be something not paid by race for.
So, hoping this is last discussion for this, let's see, go ahead. Um, I'm comfortable with the fees that you proposed, um, I think that they're, that, I am troubled that they're as high as they are. And so, I am appreciative that we're in a, and that you're being cognizant of the deficit that we're facing. At the same time, I guess my, my recommendation would be that we approve the fees for this year. I'm not sure I'm comfortable in approving an annual increase of two and a half percent, particularly if we're talking about schools actually trying to reduce fees to allow sports to become more accessible, like those two things, um, are a bit in conflict for me.
I'm right with you on that, which is that I would rather focus on the move for this year, especially knowing that there are these other considerations that we're going to have to actively be involved with discussing for closing that gap.
Yeah.
Let's take what we have in front of us and, and see how those things would impact before that we start a process on that.
So, do you amend the motion?
Um, I'm considering it.
So, I'll, so I'll just say, those, those other things are gonna take a while to come into play.
Yeah.
So, we can always change this. I think it gives Kami the, the option to always, you know, to increase two point five per year until these other revenue sources come in. Otherwise, we're gonna be back here next year having the same conversation after the year end.
That was the design.
I'm not sure that bothers me either way, I could go either way on that one, so I'm not gonna make a motion to amend, but are you planning?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's next year's fee, I, I need.
So, point of clarification, so as, as the vote stands now, just to increase user fees, two and a half percent year over year.
Yeah.
But the cap just one year, sixteen hundred, let it stay there.
Because that's the as presented.
Unless changed.
Yes, yes.
Right, forces five, four, and six.
I, I think we get to a deterrent point, but if we want to leave Kami in a position to, I think we need to have a motion to amend if there's going to be a motion to amend.
I will make that mo, a motion to amend. Um, I amend that we approve the two and a half percent increase in user fee, fees for fiscal year twenty-five.
There are second, second discussion, I'm fine with this, either way, we're gonna be revisiting this over and over.
I, and I'm not saying that I would vote against a two point five percent increase next year. I just don't know where we are going to be next year. And I, I think that we'll have more data next year and.
Okay, so now we vote on amending the motion or we vote on? So now we vote on amending the motion or we vote on the amended motion?
No, we thought on amended.
We vote on amending the motion. Any further discussion on amending the motion? Can you, like you have something to say? I, I do just want to put a couple of points of clarification out, um, not to derail the vote. I think you're going in the right direction. But our projected take is roughly two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So we're talking about sixty one hundred dollars in additional revenue out of this conversation. So. It, it's not, we are going to look at an increase in the operating expenditure. As enrollment has declined, operating is going to have to come up higher to cover the balance of offering the breadth of program that we do to the students that we currently have. I, I don't think we shouldn't, I mean, sixty one hundred dollars is sixty one hundred dollars and I think we should go forward with it. Um, we haven't raised fees since FY seventeen. And even if it's just a market adjustment or inflation. That is helpful information and on that, we're in discussion now, right? Yeah, on that basis, I, I don't feel like I want to hook to a motion of better gift of hostility.
We're doing discussion on the amendment.
Do we want to vote on?
But do, so this is my, so my follow up question then, when you say we can change it if we need to, what is that process?
We're doing right now.
Exactly what we're doing right now.
So next year.
I'm not, I'm not, I guess what I'm saying is I'm not worried about it. If we get an enormous amount of feedback come next, you know, through this process, then we can choose to pick up this issue again and schedule it for a conversation. We can say, can you please revisit this? Here's the other things we're working on in the meantime, can we choose, and we can choose to take that up as a, as an issue again.
Would the original motion um, require that, will we be voting that every year it will go up two and a half percent? Or that we're giving Kami the discretion to decide whether to raise it to two and a half percent?
That it will go up.
Yes, yeah, so I, I, I feel like we will immediately hear from people who see a greater hurdles. I'm not worried about it. I just, I also do see that four years down the road. It's very expensive to me and I'm not sure if it's worth that degree of discontent when we already have a lot of content with. Why not just raise it this year? And, a- and Kami, I'm saying this like with full support of if you come back to us and say this is what we have to do again, then I would approve it again. But I, I don't like thinking about the fact that in four years we're at five hundred plus and we're now the most expensive school potentially to play a sport at.
These are all fair.
It's about ten dollars. Ten dollars a year.
Two and a half percent.
Okay, so on that, let's take a motion or let's take a vote on the motion to amend the motion as stated. So we are voting on, do we wish to amend the motion to only supporting a vote on the fee structure for this year? All in favor of making that change? All in favor, raise your hand. That's four. All opposed? It's three, motion carries. So now we're back to the original motion. Can we continue on with the vote? Oh, we passed the amendment. Thank you. Okay, so we are.
I see what you're trying to do over there.
No, 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 I, thank you.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
Include the increase of the.
Yes, okay, yes, the, the as presented. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I'm sure we'll see you again given the breadth of the conversation we've had here.
The amended motion, on the amended motion, not the original motion.
We're, we're saying the same things. We're back to the original purpose, which is to vote on.
Okay, I move that we pass the motion as amended.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's you now. Okay, thank you.
It's going to be so. I've seen a lot of athletic directors. I have never seen an athletic director be so consistently at presence at the all middle school and high school events as you have. And it's awesome and you support a really high level of enthusiasm from our fan section while maintaining an appropriate level of decorum. And I think it's, it's been really awesome. So you deserve a lot of credit.
Yeah, thank you. We don't get complained about. Three months, ten dollars. Is this on this?
Yeah, well, yes, it's all of this. And I think this is not for Kami at all, but more for Pam and maybe Michelle as you come on. And not for, not for right away, but for the future. I found this presentation very useful. Kami, you did an awesome job of like showing the, the, the general and the revolving and how those have changed over time. If we could do that for all kind of programs that have a user fee, so that we can look kind of equity across like performing arts and STEM programs and whatnot. I think you set a great model for us. I want to think about how to, how to kind of view all those extracurricular and or user fee kind of programs.
This is really it.
Yeah.
For users.
What else do we charge for?
We do charge for pre-K, but that's, then we could certainly do that. That's a much different.
Are we charged for students performing, engaging in plays?
No, no, no.
So I haven't experienced the high school, so I, I know there's been fees for middle school.
Yeah, that's just, um, we.
Decca doesn't have any fees that come with it?
No, they do fundraising and there, there's a small student activities line for the high school that supports.
Well, fundraising and small activity lines is, I mean, I guess, I guess I'm.
User fees would, in my mind, be things that come from the family or the.
So we do, there, there are user fees for Decca. I mean, I just wrote that, so that, that I know.
Okay, so.
Yeah, no, and I'm happy to go through it all. There is no formal user fee for any student activity other than athletics. There may be costs of program and fundraising. I got my debate fundraising letter. They do do fundraising to support some of their travel, but it's not a fee. The other fee we have is facilities rental, but that's, it's not the same thing. It's just a kind of a flat fee based on. But we can take you through facilities. We used to present on lunch, but that's all free now. So that's really it for our fee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kami.
Are you thinking of something else?
I don't know, I, I revisit that.
Fundraising, yes.
Why don't I charge a thousand dollars when someone's in that play?
Cause that's not our play. He needed five hundred dollars for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not to give short attention to the, all of the options I think are going to come under review in one way or the other.
Exactly.
Yeah. But it's very helpful and thorough to have them all in one place right here. And Kami and I, I was really straightforward with Kami. I think the, the mini bus concept comes up every now and again and it's really creative thinking. And I think it's something that also bleeds into some other departments. So we said, this is something we're going to wait for Michelle to arrive to really dig into. Cause I, I think there was some licensing and there's a lot to consider, I think, is what I'll say about that. Great. Okay, we are on to our final item of continued business, fiscal year twenty five budget update and then discussion and planning. And within that, I do have something I need to have our committee input on. So I just want to make sure that we do leave time for that. Um, currently it's eight forty one PM. We are still trying to be on track for nine o'clock. And, and if we need to move beyond that, someone will need to make a motion for that at about eight fifty five. Someone be attention, pay attention to the, the clock. Oh, me. Well, you said basically your twenty five budget update. Um, just leaving it on there as a standing item. I, I guess I can give the update.
We did a lot.
You did, yeah. I'm going to start with a point of clarification that, um, the question that Antonella raised in a public comment on the per pe- per pupil fee by school. I, I think echoing some of what I've listened to from business managers past, per pupil expenditure is a very specific term with a very specific formula and set of criteria that goes into determining it. So I would, I know where she's going with it and I don't think it's a bad exercise necessarily. But per pupil expenditure is defined at the state level based on our end of year reporting. That being said, if you go to that page on the Desti website, there's also a report of per pupil expenditure per school. So it will take you through and show you, um, in those broad categories, what the expenditures are per pupil for each of the schools in our district. Like every other per pupil expenditure document, it's a lagging document. So I think the most current one is FY twenty one and it will show you the different head to head expenditures per school. With the larger schools actually having the smaller per pupil expenditure. So our smallest school has the highest per pupil expenditure. So that's that piece. If anybody's interested in digging into that, I, I have it in my files. I can send it to anyone who'd like to take a look. Um, what we talked about in our subcommittee session was just kind of what's coming up over the next couple of months. There, we were, were earlier meeting this year. Our first January meeting is earlier than it was last year. Um, typically this is a very quiet period. Our tentative budget is very, very early. Like if you look at Triton's schedule, they don't even present tentative until February. Um, so we come out very early with a lot of high level assumptions and now we wait a little bit to get clarification. So at this point, what we, we know we're holding a high number for healthcare based on what our brokers have advised. And I reported to this, the subcommittee that we are hopeful that we'll have our final number by January thirtieth. So we won't have it for our workshop. We won't have it for our hearing, but we should have it by, um, the adopted budget date of, is that sixth of November? Seven?
I think it's seven. As we get closer to that final number, does the estimate narrow in?
And that's what we talked about. We're going to speak with her. I think we have something next week and we're going to, my question for her is what's your level of certainty that it's in a downward trend and not an upward trend? And I, you know, shared with the, um, finance subcommittee that we're keeping an eye on our usage and what we got hit with meant several years ago, which was the, um, extraordinary expenses. As long as they're looking and seeing that our numbers are holding steady and that they can confirm a downward um, trend in our, in their estimate, then I think we can tighten the number. Maybe come, and we've done that in years past, like it will come halfway down. And then hopefully by February, we can haul the way down. But I need some reassurance because right now it's just, you know, they're trying to, to deal on our behalf. That's the healthcare piece. Um, other than that, we don't know much more about what's happening at the state level. Um, they're going to begin their budget process. Chapter seventy is negligible, not negligible. It's a large amount of revenue, but it's not going to. We are not in line to get increased chapter seventy. We're in holdmarkless state because of our enrollment. So that's nothing we need to wait for. We can project that with some level of certainty from past experience. So what we'll talk about on, at our workshop, there's some of those FAQ type things we're trying to solve. I've got, we're working on some language around the school choice and, and explaining that to people. Um, we've got some follow up, some questions we receive, like on the enrollment form. If, um, how come there are, how come the number of resident students doesn't necessarily equate to the students that exist in the school? It's because we have cross district placements. We can talk that through. I can show you that. And there's a couple of variations on staffing histories that we've, I've tried to go back and pull in some past numbers to kind of show where increases were made for enrollment and then where increases were made for student need. And that's the discussion of if enrollment's going down, how come that teacher reduction line isn't going down as quickly? And that's because the significant increase in heads over time, like from, from FY ten to now, has been in the area of special education, which isn't enrollment driven, but student need driven. You can see kind of the peak in the, the increase in the peak and then the decline in enrollment, classroom enrollment, which is more pegged to, um, classroom staffing, which is more pegged to enrollment. So that's one of the topics for our discussion. Um, and then E and D, which has been filed. It was filed on twelve twenty six. We're going to talk with them about seeing if they can't get it certified. My guess is we'll get that before the adoption to the. We are under that was submitted to be provided to spend and we're already carrying three hundred and fifty, um, in our budget. So we are making an allocation. So I think that will come out as we anticipated. Um, and other our commentary or discussion in the subcommittee was just, we're obligated to adopt a budget um, by the beginning of February to meet the timelines for town meeting. But if we don't have reliable information to make long-term decisions, then we can always put ourselves in the position of making the best uh, best decision we can with the information in front of us at the time, knowing that if there's a reduction to be made, March can always be used to make an adjustment if there's late breaking news.
Which happened last year.
Which happened last year.
Yeah.
Um, and that's probably the other thing worth noting. We haven't discussed it as much as we have. We had discussed the, the teacher negotiations when we're going through them. We are in, in a TA negotiation. There will be some expense, um, associated with that. And we're going to have to make some, um, provision for that in next year's budget. So whether it's earmarking some funds or just knowing that we need to leave enough savings in there to cover it. To figure out how we want to do that. What did I forget? Cause now we've been doing this for almost four hours.
Yeah, no, I don't think you forgot anything. Really, the key here is that we have a workshop coming up.
And then the hearing on the.
And then hearing for twenty third. Um, but that workshop is going to be the time where we come to, you know, really understanding on a lot of these things so that when we come to the.
I think what we ended up talking about in our, in our session was, I think the decision is really boiling down to not to always talk about it in terms of percentages, but I, I think the simplify what we're trying to do. We're trying to get as much investment as we can from a budget that lands somewhere between a two and a half and three point four percent increase on the year. I guess now's the time, if you're, by the workshop would be the time it, for us to decide if we want to pursue um, a four point, I think it was a four point four percent budget or four point five percent budget would just be direct ads of some of the proposals that were made. So let me, let me make sure I'm hearing what, what you're saying now and earlier, which is that. So coming into the budget workshop, we are going to be, um, hashing through all of these different things. But coming out of the budget workshop, you really want to have some strong direction from the committee as to where we want no longer the tentative, but the, the final to be so that you can work that for the public hearing. And then once we have the public hearing, we will get continued input. And then on February sixth, it is the sixth, when we have our meeting where, um, adopting the budget is on the agenda, we can discuss how that works and, and go through it there. So like a couple of things, like school choice, I think we're trying to hash out understanding so people can make a decision. But we are carrying an increase in school choice in the budget.
Right.
If, if we're not going to do that, then we have to.
Need to know that.
That's going to have, yeah, we're going to have to make some changes about, that's going to create a higher hill to climb, um, to close the gap. Um, E and D, that's a place where if you decide you don't, can't support increasing school choice, you could increase E and D to cover the difference there. We could increase E and D to say we want to stay at three point four percent. And if healthcare comes down, we want to invest in the teachers. So those are kind of some of the decisions. So I think we've been focused a lot on trying to make sense of some of the accounting in history and that's good. But eventually we're going to have to get to, how do we want to use this? Yes, and that's the budget workshop. We need to come prepared to, to have our opinions. Go ahead, Jake.
Just to clarify, my understanding is we typically use workshops to be more informational. I'm hearing that this is actually like making decisions.
I'm not sure that's the case. I think that it's not make some decisions, it's have some opinions to share. It's provide guidance. It's provide.
So, so it's a, it's a, it's a school committee meeting with a.
Yeah, this is a public. Yeah.
Different than how we've used workshop. My understanding of how we've used workshops in the past, but I'm fine with that. It's posted, it's available. We can be on, can be, find one.
Is in person or only in person? Yeah, but we probably should plan to meet here, um, because there is a possibility. Yeah, we're going to talk about that. It's the middle of the day. That's right. So we'll work on those details. Okay. Yeah. Okay, with that, then I do have to bring something up on this topic of since we're kind of in update and discussion and planning. I was contacted today by administrator Brendan Zabricki. The board of selection met last night in Essex and asked to find out if the school committee is planning to take up the conversation that we began and tabled. December fifth meeting about a third party review. So just as a reminder, this is part of our. You know, we made a commitment to consider all of the ideas that were presented to us at the all boards meeting. I've been through that list so many times in so many different ways and. Almost all of them, I think, are in some form or another being addressed. It's just not in a pretty, you know, sequential line, and that's fine. But they're all under consideration in different ways. When we had that conversation, it kind of didn't. We didn't get to a point of consensus. And they are wondering if we're going to take that up again. There apparently was some expectation that it would be done. At the December nineteenth meeting. I did review the notes. We didn't commit to when we would repick it back up, just that it would be after the public hearing. So we're okay on that front, but we will, we need to decide if and when we want to pick up the conversation again of. Not just that, but, you know, revisiting that list and seeing where we are for a status update. I wonder, I'm wondering if the twenty third is a time when we have enough time. Given that we have the board and we have an hour before the public hearing, what did we say we're putting on that? So while we're doing a status update for the policy and program subcommittee. That might be the only other thing we need to accomplish before the public hearing. Is, am I thinking of that, Pam? Not sure. I'm not sure. Okay. I'm not sure. Okay, so I guess my question here is, I'm not asking us to solve it tonight, but. Are we interested in creating an agenda item for the next meeting that is to revisit that list? Or do we need to push that off further because we have enough on our plate right now?
I know. So first of all. You.
I should clarify. Yeah, go ahead.
You are the keeper of the list, right? We each filled it out individually, but I have not seen like a compiled.
I thought I sent it out. I have it and I've compiled it like three different ways. Actually, you know what it was? I've handed out hard copies. I can send an email out of it. Prioritized by how many.
Right, so I feel like I would need that information in order to decide which direction we are going to take the conversation in.
Yep.
Especially knowing that. Two thirds of our stakeholders voted against the third party review.
Yes, and I I'm sorry, this is my mistake. I should have clarified that in my reply, I did tease those two things apart. To clarify that nothing has been brought forth for our consideration at this point. So we have those parallel tracks or not parallel tracks, but two separate. Things we're discussing here. So I don't know which they were asking about, but the fact is that. The presentation that was made to us on November seventh that we voted to take no position on. That was a presentation that effectively failed because it failed in Manchester. So that is no longer our consideration. The fact that Essex didn't did pass that and has money appropriated is not for us to spend. That's a separate conversation. We have not been contacted with a proposal. About anything to do about that, but separately from that, we did continue the conversation about whether we are going to engage a third party review. Because it was one of the recommendations that came. Again, separately, we just need to answer the question. Okay. Not tonight, but.
Are.
Conversation.
Is the town of Essex asking for us to make a proposal then? Is the ask for us to make a proposal because?
The the ask was simply, I will read it to you. Nope, it says, last night, the board asked me to find out if the school committee plans to take up the subject of the operations review that Essex would like, oh, that Essex would like to conduct. Using the funding appropriated at the fall town meeting.
So if it's the review that Essex would like to conduct, I would love to hear about the review that they would like.
We have no proposal. That and that was in my, we have not been presented a proposal to review. The conversation that we had, because it says, school committee first took no position, then tabled it at a subsequent meeting. We didn't table that. We weren't discussing that. We tabled our own conversation about whether we were going to do this. So I guess the answer here really is if they would like us to consider something, they should submit. They should send to me and Pam what they propose, and then we can work through when it works on the agenda.
Can you reply, respond to that communication?
Yes.
Formally then?
Yes.
Is that the will of the committee?
Are they? Are they assuming? Is it their intent that the proposal that they presented is still the current proposal on the table? I don't know, because I have had zero communication on this from officials. I've only had hearsay for the past two months on this.
I would think we have to assume no, because a hundred and twenty thousand dollars was budgeted for that proposal.
And also that proposal was very, it was explicitly made clear that that was one person making a proposal, not. Not speaking on behalf of whole groups. So I I'm. I'm feeling like if if the town of Essex would like to propose a use for that money that they. Have appropriated to conduct some form of a review, then they need to provide us that information for us to consider and decide upon.
That would a little bit of salt syrup.
And and I feel like that then would provide them the information, you know, it would provide a proposal that. Provides them the information, hopefully, that they're looking for within that budget. And it takes. That work off of our plate at a time when we clearly have.
Yeah, we didn't even get through the discussion to to try and come to consensus on whether we want to pursue this separately from that. So so I guess is it is? Do we have general straw poll consensus here that the invitation would be to submit a proposal and we would be glad to discuss it?
Can we invite them to the twenty third?
That's a public hearing. So here's. Here's one thing I am hesitant on. I would like, I feel at this point, based on how things went last time, that in order to put something as an agenda item for discussion, I want to see it well in advance. I am not comfortable just putting a presentation inviting people to come and present to us. What I am comfortable with is if someone provides us a proposal, we will look at it, make sure it's suitable for. Discussion and then put it on an agenda when where we can consider it.
Or make requests and say.
Yes.
We would love to consider this, but we would need additional information.
That's what I mean, yes. So that it's then proposed to the committee only when it is. Right. And I would think. Free hearing, the agenda is typically just simple, direct business, not the introduction of something new that could take over the hearing. Yeah. Well, this sounds like a plan, though. I mean, we we finally, we actually now have that official communication and we could. Respond with this sentiment. Is is that reasonable? Yes, great. Okay. If I can make a suggestion to communicate to them, what are what are the things they are hoping to learn? Because we do have. Kind of an exhausting list of open items. Right. Many of which actually are going to address some of the, some of what I've heard. Discussed as part of the outcomes of the operational overview, like. Yeah. Your feasibility study is going to produce an enrollment study. Right. It's going to produce. It can answer the question of the of the fees of the feasibility, can it assess the feasibility of merging two schools? And not only. And what additional building might need to be done or adjustments might need to be done to memorial if that's the case. Yeah.
I think the elephant in the room is the is that there is a trust issue. And so I'm not sure that.
I'm not so worried about that. We don't conduct those. Right, you know, those are all external things that are coming to us that they're going to pay for. You might start to duplicate your expense by hiring. An independent person to come in and do a report that.
Would this forty thousand dollars be spent on our feasibility study?
So so that's a that's a question partly for us. So we actually went through part of this exercise of what do you want to find out? And here here's what is expected. If you are going to bring a proposal to school committee about a third party review, here are the questions that need to be answered. And one of them is, what are you hoping to learn and do with the results? So that's part of the vetting process here, the why I'm not just going to say, come. Come present and talk to us, that a proposal will have, will need to answer some of those questions so that we can understand what we're even talking about. And then our discussion will involve, I mean, a willingness, but also is there information we can offer that says, hey, just so you know, this is coming. It may be a better way. You may choose to ship your funds, but that's a working relationship. It doesn't come until after we have a proposal. Right. So to summarize, you are saying that we're open to it, to look at it, but you know, give us the proposal first. We are always open to considering a proposal. We just don't have a proposal. So I will express that that we have discussed this. I'm sure I know we have a couple of people on here tonight. I did reply to Brendan in the meantime, you know, just laying that out and saying that I would bring it up tonight. And I will let them know that that's where we're at.
Um, it is nine oh three.
Yeah.
What do we have left on our agenda?
Just school committee comment.
I would like to make a motion to extend the meeting to include school committee comment.
Second. We discussion all in favor. On the school committee. Anyone have school committee comment tonight? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I will move to adjourn second. Any discussion? All in favor? Nine oh four, we are adjourned.
Sorry, if I had known that it was that quick, I wouldn't have done that.
But we did the right thing.
I thought that there was more.
Thank you.
And I forgot to text my kids and tell them.
You should get kids to bring you mid meeting.